I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Invitation here for the public in attendance to schedule time for the agenda? Didn't think so. Okay, approval of the agenda. Any objections? Without objection, we will accept the agenda as written. Consent agenda items, anything there that we want to discuss or take a look at? Stacy? Commissioners? Without objection, we will accept the consent agenda as written. Okay, while for scheduled agenda, not till 10:30. Next item is under 7A, approval of claims. Need a motion, please.
Moved to approve.
Moved and seconded by Miller and Pierce.
There was two identical, like $5,300 line items that were on the sheriff's in the jail. And it was tech support or something like that, but they were identical. I didn't know if they were separate or on both of them. And I wish I had mine, but it's taken up a long time here. I'm not sure what page it's on. Sorry, apologize for not being ready here. Okay, because they were-
It's our new software.
Okay.
So it's the maintenance pack, five thousand something?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Perfect. That's what I was wondering. Thank you. It's down at the bottom. Right there.
Any other question or discussion? Are we gonna call the roll, or are we gonna just voice go?
Up to you.
Yeah, that was after, we got educated and pure.
Yeah.
All those in favor approving the-
Claims.
Yeah, the claims. Say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Department head reports. Bart, you're up first.
I don't think so. Oh, yeah, we do, didn't we? And it's in here? Yeah, I think. I'll take one. Thank you. Yeah, we did, we did have this in our packet. Yeah.
It's on page two.
That's, I thought, my gosh.
All right, so then to go over some of the general things. The general statistics, visitation for our inmates went up. And of course, went up because of our daily inmate population had went up for the, from the previous year. We're noticing an increase in our inmate population from the felony side of things. Back in July, there was a new sentencing went in place for South Dakota that some of you may be aware of. That is, probationers or parole, parolees are coming to the jail on violations instead of going straight back to the penitentiary. Also, we're seeing more felony sentences come in because of the law that went through there. If there's not any aggravating circumstances, or it's not a high felony crime to where there is violence and things like that involved, and there's no other mitigating circumstances involved, we're seeing more of those felony sentences come to the county side instead of going to the penitentiary. And part of the problem was there, they either needed to build a new penitentiary or figure out something different to do. So their, the different thing to do was to put some of the low-grade felonies into the county side of things. So there's where we're starting to see an increase in our, in our population. We had, over several years, we had always seen a decrease in our, in our daily inmate population, and now we're starting to see an increase back up. And that follows along with how many males and females we booked in, that number increased as well. Juveniles, Abby can attest to the fact that we're seeing more juvenile traffic here in the past year. Involuntary mental health commitments did go up slightly. The drastic thing that we've seen was alcohol and drug committals. That doubled from the previous year. And, and you can see in the previous years, before that, we have not had a whole lot, but we had 10 of those last year. Here, just a couple of weeks ago, I had three in custody all at once at the jail, which is just unheard of. We usually have maybe one, if we have any, and they're, because they're just rare to have. And I think the sheriff may have told, told you guys about that whenever we had those in custody here just recently. Moving on to our 24/7 sobriety program, of course, there's a lot of stats here to look at. Our revenue stayed about the same. Expenditures, that's all of our supplies and any hours that are paid out for anybody to assist with running the program, went up just a little bit. Where we also had some new supplies of things that we had to order in. We're now doing the drug patch, which, those are a little spendy. Plus, we gotta pay for the testing fees of those and such, that increased our expenditures up some. Let's see, our participation fee, the state participation fees paid to the state is our, when you first get onto the sobriety program and you're just doing PBTs, for the first 30 days, the participant pays an extra $1 per day. They pay $1 per test that they're doing on the PBT machine. But they also pay another $1 fee for their first 30 days. That money goes directly to the state to help fund the whole program through the whole state. So that went up some. We had more people on that sometimes they will be on it just for a few days or a couple of weeks, then they go to the SCRAM bracelet, but we had more people that we signed up that were in for that 30-day period. We also seen an increase of participants. We went from 134 to 155 this past year. Our total tests administered. We don't see a huge increase on amount of tests. We had more people on the SCRAM units than we had doing PBTs. Our daily average test that we did stayed about the same. We had about the same amount of tests passed, 99.48% of people passing their tests. You know, for the amount of, you know, we got 15,563 tests that we do, 99% of that is, is a very good rate. We only had a .52% that failed. And the amount of our participants, you know, we had 155, we had 147 that were 100% in compliance. So that, that's a, a good ratio there. Total number of violations that we had was 101, which increased from the previous year. We had, we had one guy in particular that really skewed that number. He would, the judge had him on the PBTs and he'd be on them for a few days and he'd come in and blow hot. We'd hold him for a 48-hour violation, he'd go back out, he'd be out for a couple of days and he'd mess up again. So every time he was doing this, and it was very numerous, he was getting another violation report added into our, to our number system. To where finally, the judge just ended up having to put him back in jail for the whole time, which is very rare that somebody gets all of their time reinstated that they're, you know, have against them. So going on down, we had several that we had only for a 24-hour hold. Had 10 there. We had one that we held for 24 hours and made a court appearance. 38 had a 48-hour hold. One was a 96-hour hold. I think that might have been that guy that it was talking about that they decided to hold for a three-day stint. And as well as he would come into the next one there of jail time reinstated. We had two that were transported back to their home counties. They PBT here because they live locally, but they had the violation in another county. We didn't have any that went back to the penitentiary. We had six bonds get revoked, and there was three other ones that had failed and had other violations. We had nine. 25 late reports with various different holds, 24 hours, 48 hours. Most of those were released back onto the program. One of those was a bond revoked. Late would be anything that is 30 minutes or after. That does not fall into a failure and that does not fall into a no-show. So if they're 30 minutes late, then we can, we need to get a hold of the authority that oversees their file, whether it's the judge, their probation officer, or courts are, or probation officer, or parole officer, whoever it may be. No-shows, we had two that were held for 24 hours. Two that got sent back to their originating counties. We had three arrest warrants issued for a no-show. No-show means they've completely missed a test and came back for a test later or just quit showing up for the program. We had five that sat for a 48-hour hold. There was two other types of violations on that. Overall, on SCRAM bracelets, it still continues to be a popular program for us. We had 50 participants through the year that took advantage of the program. Our daily average on that is about 18. 24/7 program stats nationwide have got listed there as well. And they, they, if you can see there, about halfway down, they've got percentage of tests passed, 98.81%. We beat that. So we, we stayed above what the state average was. So I think that's pretty good for our program here. Any questions? Oh, that's right, we had our first interlock device put on here this past week. Interlock is, has been a part of the program for several years. We have never had a, it go through the court system and be ordered on to the participant. We had one here recently as a DUI second, the guy's a traveling salesman. So for him to be on the SCRAM bracelet and upload, he thought would be troublesome. Plus, he wanted to take advantage of summer coming up, he wanted to be able to go swim. Okay, we can't go swimming with the SCRAM bracelet on. So he decided to take advantage of the, of the interlock system, which is a device that's hooked up by an authorized car dealership here in town, Einspars and- Sound Sensations? Does it here in town. It's a device they hook into the, to the, to the car to be able to make it start. They've gotta blow into the machine to get the car to start. They've also gotta report to the car, whether they're going anywhere for the day or not, they gotta report to their car twice a day between 7:00 and 9:00 and blow into the machine. So they're still doing their twice daily PBTs, but they've also gotta do it to start the vehicle. As they're driving down the road, the machine may ask for a test. They've got a short period of time that they can pull over to the side of the road if they wish and operate the box. There's a camera in the vehicle that sits over on the right side, up towards the ceiling, and takes a picture of them doing their breath test. So then we have access into that camera system and into their testing that we can see that they did the test at when they're supposed to be doing it and that there wasn't any problems. They don't have their wife blown in the machine, or a friend, or somebody, you know, blown else, you know, somebody else going into the machine. They've gotta report back to us every month so that we can check them, the wires and everything, make sure the hookup still is working right, that they haven't taken the thing apart or something. So then, we got our first one on that now. So now, we, just within the last couple of months, we had never done drug patches before, we'd never done the interlock system. We're, we're doing all kinds of tests now that the, that the program has to offer.
What does the interlock system cost?
Interlock system is, over a month period, is actually a little bit cheaper than the SCRAM bracelet. It doesn't seem like it when, when you start throwing numbers out. There's a $20 fee, they pay us every, every month that they, we have to go out and inspect it, and it takes maybe 15 seconds to look at the machine, but still, it's, it's state required that they pay that fee. It's $40 to hook them up for us as far as putting all their information into the computer system and making sure we got all of our files and paperwork found correctly. The device costs $115 at the dealership to, for them to hook it up. Oh, excuse me. That's wrong, it's $80 at the dealership, and then when the dealership takes it off, I think it's 40. I don't have my, my paperwork here in front of me. There's a, I think the monthly fee is the 115. Overall, with all their, their costs involved, it's, it's a little bit cheaper than SCRAM.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I would just like to say that I commend the department for being so progressive thinking and, and using all of these devices that are available to you. Good job.
Thank you.
Very good. Anybody else? Well, Deputy Sweeby, thank you. It's good to see you. How's Ohio State doing in the basketball tournament?
Don't keep that high up on the scores. Sorry.
You seem to know what they were doing in football. Okay. Well, staying with the order that we have here in our agenda, Robert?
Good morning, Commissioners. The, the tabletop went excellent last March 12th, the, on a Thursday. We had a great participation. 61 people attended the, the whole event, and we've had nothing but positive feedback, and we're in the process now of working on the after-action review reports. And we have to have one more meeting, the final after-action review. We'll have one last meeting coming up, and FEMA's having some funding issues, so that might be delayed for a couple of weeks. And we wanna, I wanna personally thank the county commission for attending. I did go down to Arrow Status Center, they had an Eastern South Dakota Integrated Weather Team Workshop. And this will probably be a yearly type event. Instead of a two-day event, from now on, it'll probably be a one-day event. But it gives us a chance to meet the actual meteorologist that's working in Sioux Falls and give us a face. When, when we have a tornado warning in Brookings County, I'm on the phone with these people trying to figure out where the rotation is so we can sound the alarms. So it's, it's good to work hand-in-hand with the National Weather Service. Attended a Rural Fire Protection Association meeting, that, nothing, big change there. At the State Emergency Response Commission meeting yesterday, they did put out that there's gonna be a decrease in the 2016 LEPC grants. But we'll still receive a, enough grant, we believe, to pay for the LEPC meetings. It just won't be above and beyond like we've had in the past. And building permits are starting to pick up because it's springtime. Anytime we got sun shine outside and warm temperatures, people get the building fever. So that's starting to pick up in my office. Any questions?
When you go down to Arrow's for that type of training?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it just meeting the people, or what exactly is it that you're-
It was a two-day session and they had informational, it was all, it was an actual conference, in this case. The, the networking is the meeting the people itself.
Right.
And the sessions, we had people come in from the Norman, Oklahoma, which is the National Severe Weather Center. They explain how they, they determine their, the weather patterns. Some of it was above my head, being, being, I'm not a, I'm a geographer, not a, not a meteorologist. But it was a good session, it was, it wasn't just two days going down there. I can give you a copy of the agenda, I guess I should have, I, I didn't include a copy of the agenda.
I don't need the agenda, but thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Sonia, did you wanna do a department head, but we also have an agenda item, did you wanna stay for that, or whatever? Okay?
Good morning. I just wanted to come up, touch base. There was, the extension board has met this month, as well as our promotion and expansion committee, which brings a question for me of you. The roster isn't fully updated. We've got, I think this is the third year of our promotion and expansion committee, and with terms, we're looking to replace some individuals, and especially our youth as they have graduated and, you know, moved on to secondary education and are not in the area. However, the one component that I wanted some input on, there are still two individuals that remain on the promotion and expansion committee roster that are egg producers designated by the county commissioners. When we established our group in 2012, or 2013, whatever that was, oh, we presented in 2012, it's right there in front of me. At that time, we, the promotion and expansion committee that was kinda identifying members and inquiring with individuals had provided to you two individuals that were willing to fulfill that role. Now, I realize that isn't the way that we fill, in Brookings County, a lot of boards, especially our extension board, through application. So Deb Ford was filling one of those spots, as was Andy Dupre. And Andy had said, if someone else is willing, I'm happy to step down and just do my extension board role. Deb said she would be interested in staying on as kind of that liaison, if you will, between extension board and promotion and expansion. There is still one position then that is vacant, and, and Deb could reapply or whatever the decision might be, but I'm looking to you for some advice on that. Would you prefer that we find two individuals that are willing to fill those roles? Or would you rather them apply through the citizen interest application to be one of those two individuals on the promotion and expansion committee? I know that those applications are, you know, flowing into the office upon the, the call for them, so-
That's the question we had. Do we advertise like we did for the other positions within the county that the commission designates a person to fulfill the position? There's, we've had a handful of interested people. You wanna pick from that list, or do we, we wanna advertise this? I guess that's kinda how we-
I, I think we should advertise it and ask those handful of people to put in an application so that we can look at them, but I think for the general public, we should advertise.
Sonia, in the stewards of progress, yeah. Is it outline the, how the appointments are supposed to be made, and that, it seems like-
Those are the only two positions that are to be commission-appointed because at the time of the stewards of progress, the terminology used is that the extension boards were sunsetting.
Yes.
State statute identifies that the extension board will have at least two egg producers, you know, and so they maintain that component for the promotion and expansion committee. The other individuals that are made up of 4-H adults and youth and non-4-H adults and youth are collected for the committee just via invite, not necessarily requiring a commission, not requiring a commission appointment. I will present the roster to you upon all of those spots being filled for your approval, but they don't require your appointment.
Well, I'm just trying to correlate with this other boards that we have, and how do we handle it so we can be consistent, is my, is my thought. And if we have a responsibility to have our elect, not elect, but appoint a couple of people, I think we need to open it up, just like the other ones are not. We don't have to open those up, that's not our control. I guess I look at, similar to the hospital board. We have a responsibility to have, appoint a couple of people on the hospital board, and we open that up for multiple people. So I, I think it's only right to, to open it up for their, if we have the responsibility of appointing somebody.
And that's fine. We had, like Larry said, had this discussion at our promotion and expansion committee meeting last week. I haven't gone any further with it as far as individuals because I didn't wanna put the cart in front of the horse, so-
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sonia, is that a yearly appointment then?
Well, I'm not sure on that. I guess it can be whatever you want it to be. It can be yearly, it could be, you know, every two.
Because if, if we're going to appoint, then we need to put this on the same schedule as all of our other appointments when we advertise for them. So that's, that's the reason for my question. I suppose we probably then should make this yearly and get it on our schedule if you all desire that we advertise.
Any other thoughts?
The only thing is the length of term. Do we wanna do a one-year term, three years, indefinite till?
Not indefinite. That has posed problems, and, you know, historically speaking. I guess I would, right now, the, kind of the, the direction that's been provided to us from the state 4-H office is that this committee meet quarterly. We had a meeting in February where we were told that a new proposal has been submitted, that this group meet minimum twice a year. So I don't know that a two-year term is out of line, simply because they're not meeting that often, you know. Even four times a year is not a, a large commitment, but it, it would create some continuity and a little longevity, you know, if somebody didn't wanna fill a two-year term. But the, like I said, the commitment, even at four meetings a year, is, is minor.
Mr. Chair, sorry, quick question. This might be a dumb question, but is the promotion and expansion committee a county board, or is that a 4-H committee?
Well, okay, this is a quasi, this is the difference, the stewards of progress. Technically, according to stewards of progress, if you read it, it says that this board is the one that's supposed to be working with the commission. But we have an extension board, because the state law requires money to go through an extension board. But the 4-H design is that we're supposed to be working with that, the expansion and promotion board. So it's, it's a blend, it's a-
And the promotion and expansion committee is a mandate from USDA.
Yes.
That any entity working, you know, that these county 4-H programs have this to be in compliance with USDA mandates.
I was gonna save this till you got a consensus, everybody, on the appointment. And we will be discussing 4-H during the year, you know, the building, the- And I have studied that stewards of progress and quite extensively trying to get it to match with state law. And I can't remember every little detail, and that's why I figured there was some appointment process in there. But I have visited, there are- But I have visited, there are blended, just the, this is for discussion while you're here, you can think about it or get ahold of us later, blended boards in the state. To get around this Extension Board that doesn't exist except in the nine regional centers, but you need an Extension Board to receive money and then you're supposed to, under USDA, be working with this expansion promotion is that there have been some blended boards. It's Expansion Promotion Extension Board. And therefore, playing with words, in a way, you accomplish two birds, one stone. You end up having, working with the expansion promotion and you still funnel your money through the, that board. And, but I wasn't going to spring it on until another meeting, but if you're, are you aware of those or how they're working or whatever, but.
Well, there's probably not that many because there aren't that many Extension Boards in the state. At this point in time, given the situation in Brookings County, I would not encourage the blending. And by situation, I mean the discussion of new locations and some of those things. This, this Promotion and Expansion Committee serves a purpose of helping to identify audiences within the county that we should be targeting or that we are not currently, you know, they're completely underserved by 4-H programming and helping to identify not only target audiences, but programming that would be applicable and appropriate for those audiences and the other, other audiences that we are reaching. For those of you that are on Facebook, last week, robots was the topic Larry was very involved. And so, so for example, that is something that they're working on right now and helping to identify, you know, volunteers for some of these programs and, and who might we also partner with to implement that programming in the county. There isn't a lot of discussion, in fact, there was none last week regarding finances. And, and just, I'm not saying that it is something that should be wiped off the table and disregarded completely because I'm in favor of less meetings. But at this point in time, I'm not sure that it's the right way.
I want to brought it up and accept that you're here.
Oh, and that's fine.
And, and to your question, I don't think, all the looking I've done, there's a state statute that requires us to be involved with expansion promotion. But our partner is USDA, Land Grant and Sonia. And in their design, we're supposed to be working with that board. So I don't know if that answers your question, but by state statute, no, we don't have to do anything. But if we want to participate with the program, we should probably follow the program rules, so there you go.
And Mr. Chair, if I could add to what Sonia said, I too would not recommend blending those at this time simply for the two reasons that she stated, and one is financial. And, and the youth that are involved in that are not ready to make any financial decisions. And, and that's basically, that and relocation are the two things that the Extension Board focuses on. And the programming comes from the Promotion and Expansion Board. So I would not recommend that we blend those at this time either. We might be able to have some joint meetings at some point in time after some big decisions are made. But at this time, I would not blend those two boards.
Back to the question at hand, do the, does the commission wish to advertise those two?
Chair, I'd like to move forward with motion to advertise for two-year term Promotion Expansion.
Second. Can we just do this with the consensus of the board and give direction to Sonia to do that or do we need a motion?
We have to do, we have to do the advertising.
I'm sorry.
We already have a motion on the table.
Yeah, well, I'll take a second.
Second.
Okay, this is the, do we need this? Can we do this, okay, without it being advertised? Usually we, okay, usually we don't take action on anything unless it's been advertised so far. I'll take a ruling.
Either way, you're taking, you're taking some form of action here, you're moving forward with a decision. So since it's been discussed at a public meeting, whether you're by consensus moving forward with an advertisement or you're making a motion, we're discussing it at the public meeting, so move forward as you see appropriate.
Okay, I have no problem with the motion. Is any more question or discussion concerning the motion?
I like the two-year, that's what I was thinking also. You know, if, if we had monthly meetings, they could do one year, you know, it takes, sometimes it takes some people to get used to going, okay, what's the makeup here? Where do I fit in? And if you only have one or two a year, you, you may take you a while, you're going, all of a sudden you're off the board, so. But, but if also, if you go to three or four, it might scare people away going, I don't want to commit to four years, that's a long time. Exactly, so I think two's a, a good one there and I like, I like that.
Or these two people, or two people or one person, I'm not sure which, what we're doing right now. It shouldn't be the two-year though, it should, we should put a date on it to fill a vacancy and then get it lined up so it's with all of our other appointments. So we wouldn't want to appoint somebody again in, in the fall of 2015, but maybe this appointment wouldn't be for two years. Maybe it would go, if all of our appointments go through December 31st, it'd go through December 31st of 2016. Is it, is it the end of the, of the year? We had some conversation, there was conversation last fall before I went on and.
The advertising October, I think is what we're going to do now, right?
Okay, just to clarify, are you asking to amend this or are you asking at this time where the motion on the floor was basically to fill out this year and then we'll look ahead? Because I think, and I could be wrong because my memory's not the best. I think it stewards of progress defines how long these people are supposed to serve on there, but I could be wrong.
It's recommended that we establish terms for our Promotion and Expansion Committee, one-year, two-year and three-year terms. It doesn't identify who needs to be, like, my 4-H youth could be three years, but the non-4-H youth are supposed to be two. You know, it doesn't identify who should fill those terms and, or how they should be divided as far as ones, twos and threes.
Mr. Chair, for today's purpose, maybe the best step moving forward would be to, by consensus, ask Stacy to compile the information that's needed, know that we'd be moving forward with an advertisement. Make sure it aligns with what we're already doing with the Extension Board. And if she needs to come back for an action item, bring that back before the board.
Well, I don't know when the next meeting is, but thoughts commissioners on that?
Our next meeting is what you were referring to, right?
Yeah, right, but I don't know when they're meeting again.
It can wait until your next meeting, it's fine.
Yep.
This is getting bogged down, it seems like we should be able to do a consensus here for, fill the positions for two years. And like I said, I understand going to the date to the 16, or 2016 consensus, let's move forward, so.
You have a motion on the floor and that motion includes the two-year term? I'm trying to remember, Stacy.
I would move to amend the motion that the first person that fills a term, that their term ends on December 31st of 2016. And then after that, it'll be two years.
Second Amendment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second amendment, but one, there are two positions.
There is two. One that is, one that has somebody that was currently filling, previously filling and is willing to continue on and the other that is completely vacant.
Okay. Okay. On the amendment, and the amendment is to make a two-year term, it'd be December 31st of 2016. Any question or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries back to the original motion. The motion now has that we will appoint by advertising and it'll be a two-year term ending December 31st, 2016. Any question or discussion on that amended motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries, there you go.
Okay, well, I will move forward with that. The other, I just wanted to provide you with some quick updates. We're getting in the swing of things, it's summer. It isn't summer, but we're thinking about what we need to do to get ready for summer. So we've got a lot of our livestock kids involved with the project work they need to do in order to compete and participate at Achievement Days and the State Fair. I mentioned we had our Promotion and Expansion Committee last week. They interacted with 10 new robots, the Lego Mindstorm EV3s. We have an individual that is willing to be a volunteer leader for that and I'm looking at having them trained along with staff at the Boys and Girls Club the first week in May. So that there'll be actually a robotics club that's taking part in and taking, being held in the Boys and Girls Club and another that's being conducted outside those walls. I know that you have the memorandum of understanding on the agenda, but since I'm here at this moment, are there any questions of me regarding that so that when it comes to that, you can?
Commissioners, any question on that future agenda item? I don't think so, Sonia.
Okay. I also just wanted to mention that our new staff, Kim Ellingson, who began the 2nd of February, is a nice addition to the office and is catching on to 4-H things nicely. And it helps to have kind of a different perspective in our office on some of those things for those first-time families that can get easily lost in some of the paperwork and jargon. So she's, she's working in the office very well and it has really helped to maintain some consistency as far as doors being open, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving along with department head reports. Mike?
Good morning. Been pretty busy last two weeks. So the numbers of people, the number of calls out has greatly decreased. You got to be in the office to make the calls. So calls in, we had about 70 coming in, 27 people for welfare stopped in, 20 for veterans side of it, which is down quite a bit. And the calls out, we're down to 51, which normally it's closer to 100. Was in peer for two days, 18th and 19th. We're looking at the changes in the catastrophic claims process. Knock on wood, I hope we, oh, well, that makes a weird sound. I'm hoping we don't have any catastrophic claims. So it's, we did have one since I've been here in five years. We may have another one coming up, but the, the process has changed quite a bit. And so we have a group that's looking at it, the manual committee is looking at some of the changes that are taking place and see how they fall within statutes. There may be some changes coming up with that in the, in the future. Part of the reason I'm gone is I was on the manual committee to rewrite the welfare manual. The first version has been put out electronically. We used to put it out on a flash drive, this time we're, because when we did it, when I first started, they had put out a new manual and they had sold that basically to, to the different counties to get a, a group of funding. Now that, that funding is in place, we haven't had to look at getting any more money to help cover the expenses associated with the manual process. Kind of looking forward to that. Like I say, I was, Irene's been gone a couple of days and I was gone four or five days, that's part of the reason that the numbers are way down. Couple of things that have taken place that I'm pretty, pretty fired up about and stuff is. Somebody may know Michelle Rusnick is up on campus. She is now the Veterans Coordinator, I believe it is, position. She also has a position that's open with her. What they're looking at is, is how to make SDSU, which is, is one of the top schools in the nation as far as being veteran-friendly. I should have brought that number with me, but it's like in the top 20 out of the, out of 100 higher institutions. Anyway, and they're looking at making it better and some of the changes that are taking place. And so far, we've had a meeting, two different meetings taking place. Last one was on the 20th. They take a couple of hours and then on the 17th, I've been going up to campus for one afternoon every month to work with the veterans on campus that any of them have questions about their VA benefits. And usually I, I don't see a whole lot, maybe three, four students. More of them stop in and go in and out of the building, but it's, it's, that's how many that I usually talk with and answer questions for. So in my opinion, I think it's very helpful to them and I think we get quite a bit out of it. That's it for me.
Do you have any questions for Mike? All right, well, thank you very much. Moving down the line, Joyce.
Good morning. If Mike can be fired up, I can be fired up. Thirty-two entities holding local boards last week, four appeals. So that is almost unheard of, phenomenal. So Brookings City had none. Two of them came from Medery Township, one is in Elkton and one was in Aurora. The townships themselves have had none except Medery and they were around the lake. So local boards have been very easy this year. So moving on to that county board, you have agreed to meet on April 14th to hear the, all of the reports and the appeals. So far, we have none to be heard of. And so on April 7th, you have a meeting and I will report into you then on, on estimate of appeals. And in our office, Chris attended Bob's tabletop and felt it was very educational, so. Any questions?
Questions? Nope, well, thank you, Joyce. Vicki, I'll skip over you until last, Sheriff Stanwyck.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to thank Deputy Zwiebe for his report too. The one thing about it, he, he has to live in the jail every day. I go back and visit and then I can come back out and go to my office, but he's got to be in there every day dealing with that stuff. So his staff does a good job. Just for a quick review, at the present time, we have 30 inmates, have 14 in work release, three females. We have 52 participants on 24/7, so that's 104 people that come in during the day. Have 20 on PBT, 22 on SCRAM, one blowing out of other, other county. I have six out-of-county SCRAMs and then we have three on Drug Patch and then we have the one interlock. So the jail continues to stay busy. Just a quick over pub crawl is that these stats are just from Saturday morning, not, not including Friday night. Saturday morning, when pub crawl starts to 8 o'clock Sunday morning. And there was 15 arrests that came to jail, 13 of them stayed and two of them were released on POAs. So the jail stayed busy. What's, what's been always great, not great, but what is nice is that they don't come all at once. So staff can kind of, they kind of, as, throughout the day, come in and out. So that's, that's kind of nice that they don't bombard us all at once. But we did have some extra staff there to, to help because they're dealing with those and then they're also dealing with 50 people that come in to blow that day too. So the jail stays busy all the time. Another quick thing is that Swiftail contacted the sheriff's office and was asking for some extra help to assist out at Swiftail during events. And so I agreed to help them out on, for March and April. So we'll work with the city police. This coming weekend, there's a big wrestling, two-day wrestling event and so I'll have a deputy out there to, to assist with that. We'll do the same thing as I do for SDSU is that the deputy stays on overtime, basically overtime and then I send a bill to Swiftail and they pay us the overtime rate and all that. It's $45, so that covers social security, retirement and all that, so we, we get back. And that's what the city police also do on that. So, so it's just going to be, help them out the next couple, or at least March and, and April. The other thing is they snuck by me and I talked to the highway patrol sergeant and. and they snuck us by the Highway Patrol, too, the eighty miles an hour on the interstate. You know, I followed the gun bills and some of the other stuff, but I didn't know about the eighty miles an hour, and I, I probably wasn't jumped up and down to, to do anything anyway about that, but I don't know what's gonna, you know, when you're going seventy-five, you probably go a little faster. I am a little worried about eighty, and you go a little faster, but that's gonna be up to the Highway Patrol to decide. They haven't come down with a, anything that, you know, if they're gonna have a magic number over eighty, that they're gonna start hammering speeding. You know, I worry about it wintertime when overdriving road conditions, and, and we had enough accidents with overdriving and wrote some tickets and stuff, and so, but I, I think the eighty miles an hour, a lot of people drive seventy-nine now, probably set their crews to seventy-nine, but, so it'll be interesting to see that, but that kinda was a last, that was a last, towards the end, and I, it says, but, and the Highway Patrol wasn't even aware of, of it, so, anyway. The other thing, just quickly, is that I have an opportunity that I want to address with, it sounds like a scam, doesn't it, when I go, I have an opportunity for you, this is my last load. Anyway, that the city police had ordered a pickup from Eimsfahr, and it came in the wrong color for them, and it's white, which, which is my color, which is the sheriff's office's color, and so we have an opportunity to, to buy this pickup, and so I'm looking for permission to go ahead and buy this pickup. It's not scheduled for this year, I'm scheduled to purchase two pick, or two vehicles for next year, and what I would do is just order one next year. What would be nice about this, this pickup, too, is, is that the fact that if I do have funds in, in the budget, so I, you don't have to go into contingency to do this, there was an oversight in my budget last year that I didn't catch until the budget was approved, and what, basically what happened was that there was some extra money put into my budget, and of course, when, before Stephanie left, she did the budget and did all that. She called me after we combined the contract budget and my budget, and, and the commission agreed to, to do that, and she called me up and said, hey, you know, don't worry about your budget, the commission approved your budget as it is, you don't have to worry about, you know, you get your two new cars and, 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 any place I increased, and, and so I didn't worry about it. So when I, you know, so you got, the commission approved the budget, I still didn't see my budget until it came back to me, and I was looking it over, and then I see that there was, there was some extra money, about forty thousand put into my supply budget that, that I didn't request. It should be fourteen-five, and there was, ended up being fifty-five thousand dollars put in that, that budget line. So I visited with Stacy and visited with Vicki and says, you know, it's, it's approved, they're not gonna take it out, but don't spend it. And, and so that's, so I'm coming to, to the, the commission, is that I'd like to go off the police department's bid on the pickup, which is twenty-nine-one, but we're still negotiating the price, it is gonna be less than, it's gonna be less than that. Would also be nice is that I can take out a Chevy Impala, which is, is, I probably would not buy Chevy Impalas anymore, just for the fact is that they're a good car, they're pretty economical, not had much problems with this, but they're just, they're just not, can't, when you put all your equipment in there, there's just not a lot of room in it. So that has about eighty thousand miles on it, so I'll be able to take that out of, off the, off the road and give it to the jail for transport, and they always get my worn-out police cars with a hundred and thirty thousand miles, a hundred and fifty thousand miles, and so they'll be able to have front-wheel drive, which is good for wintertime, so that. So what I'm looking for is, is go ahead or ask you guys if it's okay if I, since it's not budgeted, to, to spend that for this pickup? If that makes sense, I know that's...
Well, Commissioners, what do you think of this opportunity?
I think we should take advantage of it.
I love opportunities.
I, I don't, I don't see how we could get you a vehicle any less expensive than going this route, and so, especially in light of the fact that the money's already in your budget, I, I, it's fine with me.
Marty, it's all, oh, go ahead.
It's all set up with the equipment you need?
Yes, yes, yes it is, and it's, it's just ready, ready to go, and like I said, that it, we'll meet our needs, and, and then next year, of course, I'll come back. I always order two cars. You, you've, the commission's always allowed me to, for replacement, but next year I'll come with one car, so...
Make note of that, Stacy. I think you got, go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're okay, Marty.
I'm okay, as long as I...
All right.
So that's, that's it.
Before you, I, I do want to compliment you and Deputy Zwiebe. I worked for a company that sold a product to the jail, and I gotta tell you, it scared the heck out of me when I went in there. For an outdoors guy, being in that jail is, gives you the heebie-jeebies, but I, the staff is wonderful, very upbeat, and I think the culture of that jail is very good. I mean, Bart's e, very upbeat, and the, just spreads right in through the people that you hire there, it, they were a pleasure to work with, and I'm sure it makes their stay a little more enjoyable that they're dealing with people of good temperament. I, I'm very impressive.
And, and a person doesn't realize, too, when you look at the visitors that come, you know, over fourteen-hundred, fifteen-hundred visitors come, too, so they come in, you know, during visitation, so I mean, it's, it's, it's busy, but what also works is that we got a good working relationship with our judges, and of course, Abby within the State's Attorney's Office and stuff, and so we just, you know, I talk to other sheriffs, and they have horror stories about their courts, and, and we don't have that here, we've never had that issue here. It's always, it's always been a good working relationship, so, thank you.
Okay. Richard?
I'll just briefly go with a couple things. First, we got a letter from the governor that informed us that we were awarded a two-hundred-thousand-dollar Agra Business Grant for the road improvement up by the north, Northern Sky Dairy, northeast of Bruce, and they'll send more details later, but I think it'll be very similar to like the rules and regulations dealing with, like the grant we got with Novita. So that's one thing. Second, the, the information I gave you in a little brief summary, when the DOT people get here, they're gonna explain the different ramifications of that Senate Bill one that passed last week, also with an April first emergency clause, it'll, it'll go into effect pretty quickly. I don't want to take a lot of your time, because they'll duplicate everything, but as, after they talk, I would appreciate to come up again and explain my little summary on how the status of our structures and stuff are right now in Brookings County. There's also a couple maps that will make more sense once they have visited with you, so I, I think that's about it. The other thing would be that April sixth, I was planning on having our crew go back to our four ten-hour days, this, for daylight savings time until the fall of the year, and I don't know if there's any questions on that, or whether it's just something that should take effect, or I just thought I'd mention it.
Dick, is there any way, when you go to this, that somebody could be at the office on Friday, or where are we moving those phone calls? Remember for a while there, was it supposed to go to the sheriff's office, or were they going to Michelle during regular business hours?
Right. If there was a emergency or whatever, like a stop sign knocked down or something like that, if they would just call dispatch or the number we have listed, then they get in touch with. We have a standing roster of personnel that they can call, and then we'll get somebody out there right away.
But from the citizen's point of view, it might be a little confusing, you know, is there a way that we can, technology-wise, roll it over to a live person? Like, instead of, oh, I got, I got this number, now I gotta call, people hate that. I mean, they want to talk to a person.
Right.
Is there a way, technology-wise, that it could immediately roll over to the sheriff's office, or, or Michelle? I guess it'd be better to share it, because that's twenty-four-seven versus just regular office hours, but that Friday, that eight to five, when somebody thinks they're gonna find somebody, just ask the question.
I guess I'd have to indirectly probably visit with Sean or Swiftail a little bit, because for some reason, our phone system out there is a little bit unique. It doesn't fall into the luxury like they have here necessarily, so to get it to roll over to a live number, I don't know what that would exactly involve. One thing that I guess I had a concern about, you know, there's always that idea of, not necessarily that it would have to be Linda, but Linda's the only, you know, the office manager, and if I switched her to like five, eight-hour days, that'd be one day that she's kinda, would be there all by herself, and, you know, from security standpoints and whatever the way people come and go, and you're kinda on an island out there, I feel a little bit uncomfortable, and I, I never talked to her directly whether she would feel uncomfortable, but I don't think it would be the best situation for her, even though she can do everything on Friday that she can. I mean, she don't interact to do her work necessarily, she don't need the crew like, like the other people do. So I guess I would be willing to explore some options we might have, but in, in a nutshell, it's kind of something where if, if she was there, besides answering general questions or something like that, there wouldn't be anything that would be of value of having her there. I mean, she couldn't initiate anything. I guess she could forward a call to somebody if, you know, like, again, if a stop sign was down, or...
Well, that's just my thought, I guess, if the Commissioners have any thought.
I have a question. How much walk-in traffic do you get out there?
It can vary, but usually it's the rural people that happen to be going by, and it triggers a question or something, and they'll stop in. The other thing would be like, let's say, somebody would want to pick up some culverts for their project or whatever for the township. Again, usually it requires using a piece of equipment or, you know, a couple guys to go out and throw it on the trailer for them. We don't, salesmen stop in, Norris Patrick stops in. Other than that, you know, there's, there's just a number of people, but it isn't a steady stream by any means, and, and same way with phone calls, it's, it's not overabundance.
And, and I just have to say, when we look at our strategic plan, one of, one of our goals is good customer service, and when we have one of our offices shut down for twenty percent of the time and nobody there, and, and that's not a negative comment on you or your operation, I just think from the public perspective, when we have a governmental office that we shut down twenty percent of the time for months out of the year, that that is not good customer service.
I guess I would tend to agree a little stronger if, for example, the other offices, if people come in, they've got access to most everything or, or can service them at that time. In, in our line of work, if it's a comment or a question, or, or something to that effect, like I say, if somebody came all the way to town to pick up culverts and then they couldn't get them, it, it wouldn't give them a warm and fuzzy feeling, you know, if they made that trip in, and Linda says, well, I realize we're open, but I can't help you. That's what I guess would be the other concern I would have. It'd be different, like, well, for example, somebody in Vicki's office, if they came in to get license plates and they could still get them, then it makes sense to have them open, but if there was nobody there, I don't know. I, I just, I don't...
This conversation came up before when I was at the highway. The only solution I had was, if somebody was in the office, was to rotate staff, say, so there'd have to be somebody there that could load the culverts and rotate, you know, either give them, how you'd handle it, Dick, that'd be up to you, but if they'd work Friday, they could have Monday off or vice versa. That was the only solution that I kinda, because I had the same question as you, Linda would not be able to load the culvert, but would have to do the paperwork, you'd have to have somebody there to facilitate, and that's most of the traffic that shows up on Friday, too, is township people, construction companies.
But anyway, I guess, whatever your thoughts are, and...
What, what are, what are your ten-hour hours, where, where do you meet, on those four days?
Yeah.
What are those?
Seven to four-thirty, seven to five-thirty, I'm sorry.
Seven to five-thirty, okay.
And then now it's seven to three-thirty, five days a week.
I just feel like, in the summertime, when the days are longer, a lot more can be accomplished in those ten-hour days, and, and this, it's not like this is something new. This has been going on for years and years and years, and I feel like as to customer service, if, as long as we are able to roll those calls, I, I tend to agree with Tom, to a live person, and, and then that person can get to where we need to be to deal with whatever issue comes in, then I think it is sufficient to go ahead. I, I just feel like we accomplish a lot more in those ten-hour days. So, as far as I'm concerned, we can go ahead with the ten-hour days, but obviously, I'm one of five.
I don't think anybody's questioning the ten-hour days, you know, the old, takes forever to get the tools out and then, then put them away, you just burned up half the day.
I mean, I, I think there's gotta be a way to be able to transfer that call that comes in to somewhere where we're somewhere, where, it seems to me, Michelle would have the opportunity to answer the phone call, could either take a message, could forward something on depending on the severity of, of the, the problem. And she should have, she could have the list there, she'd contact you, she'd contact, okay, this is the person that's gonna do this here, but somebody live would call on there, and then if, if they wanted to come and, and move culverts, they can't move them on Friday unless we do what, what Larry talked about, which is definitely an option there, too, but I think the first start, for me, would be to get that phone call answered by somebody, okay?
The other thing is, you have a cell phone paper, county, how many other employees? You're the only one?
Linda, Cliff, Chris.
I'm just wondering whether, I mean, I've called businesses on weekends, and which I'm not asking for here, just, but Friday's just considered a normal workday, is that the rollover would go to a person on duty or something, you know, not that you would stop doing whatever you're doing on Friday, but you're, because I've called other businesses on Saturday, boom, I get rolled over to, I'm talking electric, plumbing, that kind of stuff, and then somebody answers, they've been put on call for the weekend, but I'm not saying weekends here, I'm just saying on that Friday, just a thought, but, or the sheriffs, you know, because what if they call, I, I, I never thought of the emergency thing, I was just thinking regular, people expect you to be there on a Friday, but somebody. Well, I guess my, my inclination is, why don't you investigate a few things, bounce it around, and we'll visit about it next time.
Okay.
Is that okay with the commission?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
I do have a question about that, if I could, though. I heard Marty's office mentioned a couple of times, it doesn't seem to me like routine highway department calls should be going to the sheriff's office. I think that's something that our staff should handle instead of the sheriff's office. I don't know what the sheriff thinks about that.
You think they should come to my office?
No.
No, thank you.
I thought that's what you said. You know, the emergency stuff after hours will probably come to my office anyway or dispatch if there's a... During, my girls get bombarded with everything else. So yes, I would appreciate if they went to Michelle or... Thank you.
Okay.
One comment, too. The other thing with, that's the thing, though, if it is kind of routine business, it really would never involve being important enough to call people in on overtime and have them go out and address this, you know, they're just making us aware of something. And so I agree, you know, an emergency is one thing, but the rest of it, and that's why I say these...
Yeah, I would say that, in, in kind of two issues, regular business on a Friday and the other issue is emergency. And I think you and Marty and Linda and everybody can kick this around and come back the next meeting and kinda give us some more counsel and then more time for us to think about it, too, okay? Oh, yeah, we could, call Abby, that was Commissioner Krogman.
To kind of give you an update from our office, it's been busy with Senate Bill Number 1 to begin with, with the renewals going up. They say they're going up 20%, but it's a little deceiving because it's just the license plate fee that's going up. And like, we have one here for $73.50 is the total they pay. What the 20% is going up on is the $55.50, not the wheel tax, not the solid waste fee, not the highway patrol fee. So it's a little deceiving, you know, maybe some counties that don't have the wheel tax, it's more accurate. But with us having the wheel tax, it is not gonna go up the flat 20%. So just, you know, it is make quite a difference. And when that first got signed, it was said through the Department of Motor V that we would, if anybody from May came in to renew, that we would have to calculate manually the fees. And they disregarded that quite quickly because there's no way that we could manually do it if the computer wasn't figuring the right fees. And plus, the actual bill didn't go into effect or law didn't go into effect until April 1st. So, you know, really, we couldn't legally charge them the new fees. But there's been a lot of May renewals. April isn't a renewal month because of taxes, so a lot of May coming in, a lot of phone calls wondering if June, July, you know, down the road, if they can come in early, which they can't. It's 90 days is the soonest, so May renewals can come in. So there's been a lot of lines and it's been busy, but that's just part of the office. And so that's kind of been going on in our office. And then the finance officers report you received in your packet, and it's the be it noted items, the auditors account with the treasurer, the payroll and additives total, the highway expenditure report, and the register of deed statement of fees collected. I don't know if there was any questions on anything, it's pretty routine.
Commissioners? Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, let's move on to regular business. Under 8A, action to approve abatement, number 2115-002, abatement request by Carlson, parcel number 40057-0s-01001-00 of $809.42. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, moved seconded. Do you have any question or discussion on this? This came up last year. Yeah, and so maybe new commissioners, you're fine, you understand, okay. I think I'll do roll call here for regular action items.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, item B, action to approve agreement, number 15-43, memorandum of understanding between Brookings County and SDSU Extension.
So moved.
Moved by Jensen. Seconded by Miller. Question or discussion?
I placed just a brief staff report on your desk this morning regarding this item. The only changes were the amount actually went down, the amount that we send to SDU for partial payment for Sonia.
Can that went down because of the...
Summer intern.
Summer intern. And then the only other change, and I don't know if the board is interested in noting this or not, but in that first paragraph under personnel and financial responsibility of cooperating county, it says that the county provides sufficient funds for qualified office administrative support up to, in the parentheses, up to 19.5 hours per week. That has now changed, too, with Kim Ellingson coming on board. We actually provide up to 39 hours per week with the two employees. So I don't know, if you want to make that change, you can. If you don't, if it doesn't seem to make a difference to you, that's fine, too. But I just wanted to note that that would be really the only other change to the MOU from last year.
I don't think we would want to increase our obligation under the contract. I mean, we can choose to do that if we want, but we don't have to make it mandatory for ourselves to do that. I have a question about this agreement, though. When was the last time we negotiated anything on this? We just sign it every year and we don't look at it?
No.
In fact, that seat must have something to do with it.
No, we negotiate almost every year.
This time, we, we haven't, but I mean, this is the way it came. And, but we have discussed this every year, some to more degree than others.
And before I came on the board, I know there were some issues as relates to the reporting on budgetary items. And did that, has that all been resolved? Are all of those issues taken care of now, or does there need to be something in here about that? And everybody's looking blank.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
What, what I'm talking about is our 4H budget information, we get everything that we need now from the program?
Prior Cheek and Sonia, welcome back.
Thank you.
Makes a presentation and is along with the Extension Board members as to their budget and...
Well, I'm new enough that I don't know that this agreement is exactly what we need. And so I just wanted to ask that question. If we negotiate that, if we look at it, if we're making changes as we need them.
She's a department head, just like the rest of our, I mean, we treat her as a department head, just like the rest. And so she comes in and presents her budget to us.
And might I add, in regards to the MOU, you've been presented it, with the exception of the changes like Stacy mentioned, it's the exact same document that you signed last year. That does include the changes that the commission incorporated last year prior to sending it back to SDSU and the Director of, of Extension for signing.
I, I will say that we can only go so far with this if we want to keep 4H because it is got some rules and set up by the USDA and, and comes through. I think personally, this year, we'll agree to this. And we, I've already said that we'll be visiting 4H. I've contacted Dean Dunn and through him also included the email to Carla Troutman and Peter Nielsen, who are her direct supervisors, that when we talk 4H, they can come. And I think that'd be a good time to talk about, I think you'd get a clearer picture of the whole, whole process. But for now, I guess personally, I support moving ahead. I, I, but didn't mean to get jump ahead, the other commissioners, go ahead.
I think it's, you know, it's always been a work in progress and always will be. It's a interesting dynamic setup between USDA, Extension, us and everything. And it will continue to be, I don't think there's a clear-cut picture, but we, we keep having discussions, we keep doing that. They've provided a nice budget for us and, and we're able to, to work with everybody on that. And for right now, I think this is, this is a good, good step, we can continue to do this. But, you know, always looking into this, seeing how we can do better and how we can make this more efficient for, in the end, for the kids, I think is always good discussion, so. But right now, I'm, I'm okay with this. Sonia, you, you see any issues of how things have gone here this year with this memorandum?
The motion to approve and the second was one of the fastest I've ever heard, so I guess I'd like to say I see. I, I don't see anything in here that is obviously blaring red flags or anything. They requested a copy of last year, the individual that was working wasn't able to access whatever had been signed last year. So I, I know that they took, paid special attention to creating this MOU for 2015 so that it replicated last year and it created, you know, that sense of good neighbors and continuing to work together to, in my opinion, better 4H in Brookings County, but...
Towards, towards the budget line, I know for a fact, was it made, moved forward, I guess, or how it was done, that an Extension member has to sign your claims?
That was a request, I think, of this board. And so we have been having a one member of the Extension Board sign everything that comes up, I guess.
Okay, that's, I've been out there a couple times and for the Extension person to make a special trip into town on Claims Day, I mean, sometimes can be...
We hit up people as they're available, or Susan will run up to campus to find one of them that works, you know, on campus.
I just want to know where that originated from and what reasoning behind it.
Any other question or discussion on the motion to approve the memorandum of understanding? Hearing none, call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, item C, action to approve agreement, number 15-44, utility relocation agreement between Sioux Valley, Southwestern Electric Cooperative Incorporated in Brookings County for 34th Avenue reconstruction. Your, uh...
Moved.
Second.
Krogman, Pierce? Any question or discussion on this? I don't hear any, but I, I just wanted, during question or discussion, thank you, Abby, and thank you, Sioux Valley. This has been a process that goes way back and a lot of meetings, so...
I think maybe we need to thank our two committee members.
Well, you can, nobody's more thankful to see this than the two committee members. Thank you, Abby. Is there anything, comments you wish to make?
Just that any of the funds that are referenced in there have been reviewed by everyone that's involved in this project, so I defer to them, that those are accurate. And then whenever they need those funds, looks like in the letter, actually, they're requesting the initial cost be paid here. Once it's signed, include the initial payment of $5,000. So I guess I would ask at this time, if you are also approving that be remitted with the agreement or if you want a separate claim brought forward.
In my mind, I was making that part of the agreement, in my mind, okay.
So with the signing of this then, and once we get the payment processed, I will send this back on to Sioux Valley and we will let them proceed. And I can report that we have obtained easements for Sioux Valley from all of our landowners.
Thank you. Any other question or discussion on the motion to approve the agreement with Sioux Valley? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, item D, Resolution Number 15-12, authorizing the purchase of real estate for 34th Avenue reconstruction.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved by Pierce, seconded by Krogman. Question or discussion?
Here again, I think we need, I know how hard all of you have worked on this. Commissioner Pierce, Commissioner Wyeth, Commissioner Krogman, and especially Abby. And I want to thank you all for, for your due diligence and your hard work on this. I know this was not an easy process and I'm glad that it's where it's, where it's at.
Well, thank you, and thank you to the participating landowners. Any other question or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller? Jensen?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Motion carried.
E, update on 34th Avenue, Scott? Scott Moore from Banner Engineering.
Good morning, everybody. Like Commissioner Wyeth said, I'm Scott Moore with Banner Associates for the two new members here. So which one do we have up there? Okay, this is for the, the actual upgrading of the timber. What's out there right now are timber planks for crossing Highway 34. And this agreement is to upgrade them to a precast concrete versus the timber. So we had to apply for that agreement. And what, what works with that is the railroad does that work themselves. So we apply to them to get into agreement to do the design work and do the construction work. So the $15,000 preliminary engineering services agreement that they supplied will be them providing engineering and bidding. They will then get their own contractor to come in and build and do that upgrade. And what, what the people on Texas were telling me on that is if it's $3,000 in engineering fees, then the remaining $12,000 goes towards the construction of the, of the crossing itself. So by the time they get to stage three in the preliminary engineering, they will provide you with a cost estimate so you know exactly how much that crossing is gonna cost. They don't feel the $15,000, it'll exceed that, but until they get the actual design and everything involved, then they'll be able to give you an updated cost on that. And of course, with the railroad, they have a, an application fee for that highway crossing of $1,000.
Quick question. Is that gonna be done after the road is built or...
During the same time, actually.
Because, you know, it's, it's, I know they've talked about how high that is and maybe how we're gonna have to stop that slope. Is that, I mean, is that all gonna be coordinated together, that they're not putting something in that all of a sudden now does not fit with the...
No, it'll, it'll all be coordinated. Part of their request in that email is asking for our design plans and everything. So they'll have our survey, our design plans and everything on how the road's gonna be built and they'll, they will design that precast crossing to match our street design out there.
We, we asked Scott to come, Ryan and I met with him last week or whatever it was. And, you know, it took quite a while to explain this to us. And it's, that's a standard procedure when you come to deal with the railroad and it's their property and their tracks and they want to control the work that's done on and around them.
Pretty much, pretty much, yes.
So if you have questions, go fire away because we sure did. But not...
Is it, is this an upgrade that is required of a new road? When we put a new road in like this, is this something that is an upgrade that is required? You know, because going from timbered to the precast, from a gravel road to asphalt road, is that just normal?
Typically, yes. When you're, when you're going from a gravel surface into a asphalt surface, to have a somewhat of a quality ride across that, you would want to do that upgrade. And I think since it's been a township road and a gravel county road for so many years, they've just ignored that one where they've, like, in the city of Brookings and in the city of Arlington and all along that route, if they've had city streets, they've made them upgrades along, along them crossings. So it's a typical improvement that you would put on there. So, it's a typical improvement that you would put on there.
And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
This crossing, it does not include control arms then?
That's part of that grant, that, the Railroad Crossing Improvement Grant that we applied for years back, or whenever we did it. It seems like it's been years, but, so that was part of my misunderstanding at the beginning, because I knew we applied for this railroad improvement crossing grant. Well, that is just the signal arms and the control structure.
Okay.
So, then, when we had our meeting on site to discuss that portion, that's when the Rapid City Pier Eastern Railroad and Susan Tracy with the DOT informed me that it's just for the signal arms. If we wanted to improve the crossing, you have to make another application for it, and that's what this is.
Okay, thank you.
Do, do we have a choice in the matter, or is this additional sixteen thousand a mandatory thing via the railroad?
It's, it's, if we want to make that improvement, it'll be, it's a mandatory thing. Otherwise, if we, if we decline to do this, we're going to keep with a timber structure out there. And, and when they decide to make that upgrade, they'll probably just do this to you later on down the road. Here's your preliminary engineering fees, and here's your application fees to do it. You're either going to do it now, or you're going to do it after you got a brand-new road.
Mr. Chair, a question Scott and Dick and I had as well is on this acknowledgement and acceptance, the page I have up here. This is something Dick would normally sign, but because this is a special project that we've been, the commission's been so involved in, we just wanted some direction as to whether or not you would be, by consensus, comfortable with him continuing to sign, or if this is something the chair wanted to sign off on.
Right now, we have it as action items.
And the action items are just approving the fees, but this is just something that we had discussed and wanted some direction on.
Yeah, well, Dick, I was going to get to you anyway, and have a comment about your previous experience or what you've looked at and thought about this whole process. Dick was under the weather, couldn't make that meeting, so we didn't get to hear your expertise.
Oh, well, basically, on railroad crossings, they always use the philosophy that they were there first and your road is crossing their track, so they do kind of hold the cards. And the other thing would be what we're doing at the crossing is a smart move while we're doing it, because we're going to be establishing something that'll be there for an enormous amount of years. So, I, I think it's the way to go.
To Abby's question, any opinion?
You know, I guess, I don't want to change what we've done in the past and that kind of stuff, just because we had a little bit more involvement, and it doesn't mean that Dick still can't, you know, sign the stuff that he normally would sign. So, I don't think we need to make any special exception for us to sign stuff, in my opinion. But again, everybody else can talk about that, so, you know, I don't want to, as we're getting this going, as we've gotten bids, as we get this thing built, you know, updates are great, but I don't think we need to be signing stuff, signing off on thing, and everybody micromanaging the project. We want professionals to do their job, so I think we, we don't want to have to slow something down because we need a commissioner's signatures rather than Dick's signature. So, you know, I'm okay if that's normally the way it's done. I don't need any special signatures from anybody.
Thoughts from any other commissioners?
I agree with what Ryan said. Dick should do what Dick normally does. I do have a question, though. Do we have a signed agreement already? I didn't see that that was in the packet. So, is there, or is there an agreement form that will be getting signed that's not in the packet?
With the railroads, you've got many agreements. But for this crossing, in the preliminary engineering service agreement here, no, we don't have another one. But there is another agreement in the packet for working within the right-of-way. Their occupancy permit is another item that we'll be discussing. So, for this particular item, just the crossing itself, this agreement and application is, is just for the crossing.
Right, but do we have the agreement form for the crossing? When they say you got to send back your fifteen thousand dollars in the agreement form, what is, what is the agreement form it's look like?
I have the agreement form. I got it all filled out. All that will require will be a signature and, and.
One fourteen? Okay, that is the, the letter, but.
Pardon me?
Is that right, that this letter plus the last page will be signed for acknowledgement and acceptance?
That letter would be signed for, for the fifteen thousand dollar preliminary engineering fee, and then there was also an attachment for the application for that, which is the thousand-dollar fee for the, for the crossing.
Yeah, that one you just held up, I don't think we have.
Okay. I was thinking that all came with, with, when Florida or Texas mailed that in, that both were with it. But if you would like to take a peek at it, I can.
This would be the application, though, right?
Actually, you can just put it, you can put it on the table, and everybody can see it, right?
Yeah, that's right. Right, yeah, where your.
Move your notebook.
Notebook, yeah. But before we move to that, let's just finish.
Oh, lucky there.
I wonder if we could just continue with the discussion on the first part, and then, right now, we're looking for consensus with Abby's idea that, I appreciate bringing it up, and as far as a consensus, Dick would sign the form. Okay, we have consensus there. Okay, I think that pretty much takes care of the questions right now on that part. We may have more later when we actually take action, but why don't you move to the application?
Okay, now, the application here is, it's just, basically, I filled it out, and I put Banner up there for a, for a contact. And the actual one that's completed, I put Banner Associates for Brookings County, just so the railroad would be calling me with questions, and because there's a lot of, you don't see it in this application form, but in the email, there was a lot of data that they asked for. They asked for our survey, they asked for the design plans, and, and that will get included with this application when we send it in. It's just information, filling it out, the crossing identification, we have public or private, and it's funded with local funds. There we go, and it's reconstruction, it's just going down here, and then they're asking for crossings next to it, east and west, north and south, number of tracks that we'll be crossing, angle of the tracks to, with respect to the road there. And then you get into the utility information, so we got where, we have clearance above the rails. BMU's three-phase power is twenty feet above, actually, it's thirty-three feet, and Sioux Valley's is thirty feet. These, this is an old form, the, the actual one, once I got these numbers from BMU and Sioux Valley, I've changed it, but I just wanted to get something started. Underground crossing, basically, track carried by, I didn't understand what they even wanted with that. And they just said, just put down there's existing sanitary, if that's what it is. So, in that spot, I'll have existing sanitary sewer. You know, and the design standards, when BMU installed that sanitary sewer ten years ago, or whenever that got installed, BMU owned that, so they followed BMU's design to go underneath their crossing. So, it's just information, the more information they got on that crossing, easier it'll be for them. So, then you get to page three, and you're basically just going to initial that you're enclosing the thousand-dollar fee and signing off on it.
Any other questions there? Scott, why don't you stay right there, because I think we'll, I think if there's any other questions, we're going to take action here during discussion, just in case. I'd like to move on with the commission's approval to F. Action authorized paying a fifteen thousand dollar fee to Rapid City Pier Eastern Railroad for engineering service for a precast concrete, crossing of Thirty-Fourth Avenue. Is there a motion?
Go move.
Jensen, Krogman. Any question or discussion?
I just think it should be noted for the viewing public that this is an amount above and beyond what the grant funds were to be used for.
Outside the grant, yeah. Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Wyeth.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, item G, action to authorize paying a thousand-dollar application fee to Rapid City Pier and Eastern Railroad for highway crossing or construction projects over, under, or adjacent properties and tracks for the Thirty-Fourth Avenue project. Is there a motion to approve?
Go move.
Krogman.
Second.
Jensen. Any question or discussion on the application? And this would be signed by Dick with the changes that you've noted, Scott?
Correct. Do we have any additional fees that you think will come up? We continue to have application fees, and I understand why they charge them, because then everybody would, you know, apply and then say, okay, we're not doing it, and they spend funds and stuff, working through it, and then it doesn't go through. And there's a lot of roads that cross the railroad, so I understand that. But is there anything else that's anticipating coming up down the road?
The other fees that they've disclosed recently will be in the next item, I think, is the occupancy permit that they have. This was, this agreement was mailed, the occupancy license agreement. We applied for this to work within the right-of-way back in November, and this agreement is just to work within their right-of-way. So, they need contractor information, which we can provide them once we get our bids in and we award a little bid for the contractor, and contractor insurance. So, with this one.
So, this will be, this will be coming down the road?
This is the one, we've already sent them a three thousand dollar check on.
Okay.
All right, we misunderstood you. We took it that we were going to take action here today. We don't have.
Well, there's, there's fees here. That weren't disclosed earlier.
In addition to the three thousand?
Yes, in addition to the three thousand. They have a one-time agreement processing fee of a thousand dollars. And then they want an engineering, well, the engineering review fee of fifteen hundred we've paid for, but they're looking for an annual fee of two hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty cents to occupy that right-of-way annually.
So, okay.
Maybe I can just interject here, Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes.
That's something that Scott and Susan Tracy from the DOT and I are all working on. The DOT feels pretty strongly that these types of fees should not be remitted, and we have already sent letters on different fee issues regarding a similar situation. So, this is something we're going to continue to work on, rather than just pay these fees upfront, because South Dakota might handle these a little differently. So, we are working con jointly with DOT on this.
Yeah, it's all coming back to me, but we don't have it in the packet. But I've seen this, and I remember the discussion that our counselor has given us, that.
And I'm, in, working with this agreement, we're working with people out of Florida. The other one was out of Texas. These guys are out of Florida. They told me they would be willing to waive the one thousand dollar, one-time agreement fee, but they would really like to keep the annual fee in place. And if you can provide me with documentation about a public right-of-way, then we'll forget that, too. But that's something that Abby has been working on diligently, trying to see if there's something in our state statutes that.
I guess, one question I have with that, and maybe Abby can work towards this. That's an annual fee, and basically, this construction will be done in a year. So, you're thinking that might be two fifty, or are they going to charge us, as long as we have crossing stuff and everything in that right-of-way, that they're going to charge us every year for two hundred and fifty dollars there? So, I guess, if you could find that out, too, what the, I mean, if it's two hundred and fifty dollars, you know, because for the amount of time that we're doing construction in there right-of-way, it's two hundred and fifty bucks, okay, I'm not.
I asked that question to the personnel in Florida directly, and she told me this is an annual fee, just.
Every, every year?
Every year.
Is this a new annual fee? We've done work in the right-of-way before, and we've never had to pay this annual fee.
Well, this is a new, Jensen, Wyoming, first time we've dealt with it. I'm not sure if.
Because we've got numerous roads crossing right-of-way within the county.
And I would almost suspect that if we ever do any improvements in there, these fees are going to come back for them crossings. Right now, there's just too many of them to try to keep up with, to have an annual fee on all of them, but we're doing work on this one, so.
Well, I think this is something that we should leave up to our deputy state's attorney to bring back to us, and she, I trust that she will work diligently to try to alleviate this fee.
Scott did answer your question. Are there other fees that we? And there is one.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. I'd rather have you talk about it now, so we're prepared, than bringing it up another one and, another time, so.
So, right now, the discussion is on G, the thousand-dollar application fee. Any other question or discussion on that? Hearing none, call the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Wyeth.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, I, hopefully, I, this is not a, this occupancy, we can get this taken care of in the next couple of weeks without gumming up the works. Right, okay. Thank, thanks, Scott, and appreciate you coming in, and you explained this way better than Ryan and I could have, I think. Maybe Ryan could have, but.
Did you want, I did find out a little bit more about your grant.
Yes, you bet.
You know, it's, what Susan emailed me was basically, she will write the agreement with the railroad, and the DOT pays the railroad for the crossing arms, and then she will also write an agreement for the county to be, for reimbursement of the ten percent, because it's a ninety-ten grant, so ninety percent is grant money, ten percent is, is local fund. So, if our two hundred and fifty thousand dollar estimate's right, then twenty-five thousand dollars of that is the county's responsibility. And she'll be doing all the agreements for that.
Questions of Scott, considering that? What, what's the ballpark on these types of safety equipment, signal arms?
And she actually, Susan Tracy, provided with us that back at the beginning.
Yeah.
And I know we've put in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our estimate, and I know there's a letter out there when we requested, applying for this grant of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I think even in here, she still stated that it, the actual cost is still unknown, but.
Okay. Well, I, I remember when we first started this, Commissioner Krogman pointed out that, that, that angle is very dangerous, and I think that ten percent is well spent, and it would consider a person's life. I think that's, you know, hopefully, we get the grant.
I, I think the grant's a done deal already. I think.
Well, I've heard that over and over again. Okay, any other questions for Scott? Yeah, thank you very much for coming in.
Well, and thank you for your time, and I know Commissioner Wyeth and Commissioner Krogman have emailed many times with me, and I appreciate their emails, so if anybody else has any other questions, just feel free to either call my office or drop me an email, and I'll do my best to try to explain it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
Well, Robert, you're all ready for H. Action to approve resolution number fifteen dash thirteen. A resolution approving the final plat of twenty fifteen, plat zero zero four, plat of running first edition in northeast quarter, the southeast quarter, section thirty-six, township one oh nine north, range fifty-one west, and the fifth prime meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve.
Second.
Miller, Pierce.
Thank you. Commissioner, the Brookings County Planning Commission heard the following plat on March fifth. Regularly scheduled planning meeting, two zero one five, plat zero zero four, and sent it to this board requesting final approval for this plat.
This is a previous, has an existing homestead on it, correct?
Correct, yes, sir. And it's also on the county line, so it is a real odd shift to the, to the angle of the property.
Any other questions or discussion? You in? No? Okay, there is. There is none, call the roll.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wyseth.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye, discussion possible, request fill vacancy for deputy director of, wait, I printed mine out, it ended right there. Well, county development, I guess that's where it left. This has also got a line through it, didn't print out quite right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think that we're a little premature with the request to fill vacancy because we need to discuss how we're going to revamp the departments.
I think.
If we're going to.
Well, that's, yeah.
Well, that's why we're, it's listed as discussion possible action and we thought we could have the discussion. And, and the reason to tag on the action would be if we are going to ask Bob to double duty and, and we, if we're in agreement, why drag this out, I guess? So let's, let's have some discussion on this position and.
I guess, you know, I've thought about this, you know, quite a bit after we've had this discussion and stuff and, and I, I guess, you know, we did this a couple of years ago, trying to think, two or three years ago, we did this and I, I think with good intent of trying to have a cover or have some backup to this here to, and I, and I, I think it can work, I do. I don't want to change it all around after one or two years. I'd like to see it, see us try again with the same type of makeup that we have with the seventy-five percent emergency manager, twenty-five percent planning zoning director, which is currently Bob, and then the development department here, the deputy director, which we'd be advertising for. I, I think, I, I don't, I don't think this is a bad, in my opinion, I don't think this is bad what we did last time. It just didn't work now and I'm hoping it can work this next time. And, and so I would like to keep us the same, keep it there, see if we can make this model work and if, and if it doesn't, it just, it makes it too difficult for, for everything, then I'd certainly open for that, but I'd like to see it tried, you know, another time here.
I agree with Ryan.
Okay. Larry and Stephanie.
That's fine with me. I was in on revamping it this way the first time.
Okay, Larry? Yeah, I, I'm in the same opinion that give us a roll and then maybe along the road, we see a different way of going. We'll have people in place and trained, so. Hearing that, this, I would like to have a motion. Oh, Bob, you want, Bob, you want to speak?
No.
Since it's your department. Sometimes it's customary to let the department head dust.
I have no problem with the way it's working here. The, the department is broke down into basically two divisions, at least that's the way I, I treat it. When it comes to finances, the two departments are going to have, or the divisions are always going to have to be separated because I got a different funding line for the emergency management side versus the, the planning and zoning. What we can do is evaluate the drainage budget. We can combine the drainage budget, I believe, I was to check with the, with the finance officer, we could probably get rid of one of them, right now I got three budgets. We might be able to take the drainage budget and roll it into the planning and zoning budget if it's wishes of the commission, of course. Then that would streamline stuff a little bit easier, at least on the financing budget side of it.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Thanks, Ryan, for jerking around a little bit there. I deserve that. So any, now that we've heard from our director, is there a motion?
I'd make a motion that we, we, I'm trying to, can't read very well here, request fill vacancy for deputy director.
Second.
Krogman, Pierce. Any other question or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Pierce.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Wyseth.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Jade, discussion of possible action on request for a job description change in the equalization office. So we'll start with the discussion.
She's back. You want to start with me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to start with, I've been trying to accomplish this for four years and so I have, I'm back. I've, I've been here before with this. I just want to make a few points on this. First of all, in my annual review with the commission last December, the comments given to me and recommended to me were that I have a good succession plan in place for the equalization office and also I was advised to reevaluate the current positions that I have in my office. So basically, that's why I'm bringing this forward to you again. Second point I want to make is that this request in no way detours from what all of the appraisers are doing in our office. The appraiser position in our office is a very important part of the office and they are all doing their job, filling their job requirements and doing excellent work. So I'm not detouring from what I currently have. But the third point I want to make is that one of our appraisers has been extensively cross-trained in all of our computer programs. We have a ProVal KAMA system in our office. We've had it since nineteen ninety-eight and a KAMA system is a computer assisted mass appraisal program. It's, it's huge. The engine of the ProVal system is more than anyone wants to know. And currently, I have my deputy trained to manage the ProVal system, which uses Crystal reports, it uses Sequel reports to correlate the, the programs in our office so that we don't have errors made in our assessments. And so in this programming, Chris knows it forward and backward and in the last four years, we have been training Jacob in our office, who has a four-year computer degree, to be totally cross-trained in ProVal and the Sequel programs and the Crystal programs. And Jacob is cross-trained. So if something happened to Chris, Jacob could step in tomorrow and take care of this program or vice versa. So I think this cross-training in our office is, is desperately needed because we need to keep the accuracy of our assessments and I think we've proven that this cross-training works as far as having errors and everything matches when we send out assessment notices. I'm not asking to add an extra employee, I'm just asking to add a different job description to actually promote an employee within our office who knows and does more than the appraisal job description right now. So with that, I'll stand by for questions.
Commissioners. You're studying.
Well, you are correct. We did ask you to do that. Thank you for doing that. Appreciate that. We want, you know, the equalization office to be as well-prepared as they already are right now under your guidance. So I appreciate you bringing this forward and identifying somebody that has abilities that can go above and beyond and, and step right in. So I definitely appreciate you bringing this forward. I think it's definitely a good discussion we need to have and stuff like that, but certainly understand the reasoning and you're doing what we ask you to do, so I guess I'll let everybody else chime in.
I have a question. If we were to change the grade, would this take effect in this year?
I, that's what I would like to see. The reason I'm bringing it forth right now is Jacob is due for his step increase and so he's had his annual performance review and it was satisfactory. So if we could do it now, I think we would already be in tune for what needs to be done in the future. And I should reiterate or, or add that the, the extra salary that this would take could come out of my current budget with no contingency funding. And Laura has drafted different options for you as the commissioners to look at as far as where you would want to place him in the higher grade and the difference in the dollars. And I think you're looking at that right now.
That was my next question. You are way ahead of me.
Other commissioners? So he's at a grade six right now, correct?
Right, all of the appraisers in our office are.
He's not at the top of the scale though.
No, he's not. He's in the mid.
And they move to grade seven, he would be put at where on the scale compared?
Right.
Would he be at the beginning or would he be in the middle?
Well, that's, I'm leaving that option up to you. I think currently he is at a grade six in a grade, he's at a grade six with a step six and I think he's supposed to go to a seven.
Seven at what step then? I can't see it.
Step seven.
Right.
Okay.
And, and the options are moving him up an entire grade and then you as a board could determine what step to put him at with the difference in the dollars.
And I'm not familiar with the grades are, excuse me, that you have in there now. You have yourself, you have Chris and then appraisers, is that, is that correct?
Right. Currently, our job scale is the clerks are at a four. I have two of those. I have three appraisers at grade six. Chris is a grade eight and then myself. And this would keep the clerks where they are, have two appraisers at six, have a senior appraiser at a seven, my deputy at eight and then myself.
Yes.
Well, I'm going to step out here.
Okay.
Um, for the last, for the previous four years, commissioners were pretty adamant that they didn't like grade changes. Reason Joyce is bringing this again. However, having said that and Joyce having done what we asked of her and rearranging her office, I would have no problem changing him to a grade seven, step five. It's, it is not a huge impact on the budget. It puts him being cross-trained a step above the other appraisers, which I think he should be. And I like the fact that he could take over a very complicated computer system. And for those reasons and having listened in the previous four years to all the reasons why we should not do it, I believe that Joyce has put herself in a better position to move him this time. I've said my piece.
Any other questions during this discussion phase? Chair would accept a, a motion of, and would you state your motion since we have the options?
I will state a motion that I move to, move Jacob to a grade seven, step five. Effective whenever she wants it to be effective immediately or?
April first is his.
Okay, okay.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Miller, Krogman on the motion. Now, it's open for discussion and questions. I feel it's just, it's a grade, a movement up in the grades, the dollar amount is, I mean, it's giving him more of a higher ceiling to go for. I mean, just, it's a movement and it's within the grades, so I have no problem with it.
I agree.
Okay. The only question or discussion I have is in your letter, do we need a title with this? You threw out a couple of options.
Laura is preferring senior appraiser.
And if we don't say anything, that's what it will be?
Right. She, the job, the job description that Laura finalized says senior appraiser on the position title.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
I definitely agree with it. I think, you know, we have to compete to keep our good employees and stuff and there's, it's, they have options other places too. And if we hopefully can show our willingness to work with people that have done a good job and do that, I think a, a grade change is not out of line. And, and the five, if you look at the difference from what he would probably get anyway on his change, we're only talking seventy-five cents, basically. But like Larry said, the ceiling's higher for him, so, and, and we talk about appreciating our employees, you know, he's willing to cross-train, he's doing that and I think showing some appreciation by changing that, I think is a good thing, so.
I think to be recognized is the most important part of this, above and beyond the salary change.
We had, we had that discussion in our meetings there about, about that.
Appreciation.
Appreciation, so that, I think kind of hits home a little bit here.
And, Mr. Chair, I'd like to also say that you make this task easier for us with the information that you have provided us, Laura's breakdown. It's wonderful to have HR doing this for us. Thank you for doing that.
And I will thank her. She, she and Stacy both were advising me on all of this, so I thank both of them.
And you make it easier for us.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion before us to change the job description and that job description would be under option one, which is grade seven, step five. Any more question or discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Wyseth.
Aye.
Motion carries.
In my profession, we have a happy appraiser dance, but I'm not going to show you that. But thank you very much.
Okay, well, a little late, six minutes late. They're early, they probably drove eighty. We have scheduled Doug.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Point of privilege, before we start with our guests, could we take a five-minute recess?
With their consideration? Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I know, mine did the same thing. Mine did the same thing.
I keep having troubles with mine too, so maybe it is the packet size.
I touched the wrong deal, and I had to go back and reload it.
I've done that twice during the meeting.
I gotta get mine so, it does default so quick. Okay, uh, we'll call the meeting back to order when we have our guests. Uh, Doug Kennerberg?
That's correct, thank you.
Uh, local government engineer Noel Clockson from the Department of Transportation, and this might take care of one of our discussions later is on our agenda is SB one. Uh, we were out in Pier when you guys were just still making stuff up, and, uh...
Yeah, that does continue.
Uh, well, it happened rather suddenly. Our sheriff was questioning, where in the heck did that eighty come from? Overnight it appeared, so please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, uh, thank you for inviting us. I don't have a set presentation to give you. I'm really here to try to help answer any questions you might have. I know there's a, a bunch of them floating around, and we're, quite frankly, we are still, uh, making things up and trying to figure out exactly where we are going with, uh, the current legislation. Uh, I do wanna throw out the, the suggestion to thank any of our state legislators that you happen to, to come across, 'cause I think they've, they've taken a, a great big step to help, uh, improve our, our road and bridge program across the state. Uh, some of the recent changes that we've got, obviously with Senate Bill one coming across, uh, in light of the, the governor's, uh, state-of-the-state suggestion to, uh, uh, remove DOT from some of the bureaucratic red tape process, uh, and trying to get some of the funding down to the local governments. Uh, the, the part that we're currently in the process of trying to work out is our surface transportation program funding. That is the, the federal allocation that, that you get each year, uh, that is a pass-through through us, and, and in the past has only been eligible to use on federal aid eligible routes. Uh, we have provided an option years ago, we called it the ninety-ten program, where you're able to get ninety cents on the dollar, and, and that money went into your road and bridge, uh, fund, and you were able to use it on any of your roads. Uh, when the state ran into, to some troubles with, uh, our budget, uh, that program had, uh, come to an end, and then we did allow a, uh, annual option of taking just the federal portion of that, which happens to come out to be, uh, about eighty-one point nine-five cents on the dollar. That was on a year-by-year basis. What we're trying to do is, is bring back the ninety-ten program in a little bit different fashion this time. The ninety-ten program before was still one of the, that, uh, DOT did provide review, uh, and comment on those, and, and we tried to track the funding very close on that. The, the proposal that's currently on the table right now, that, uh, we're yet to, to get a final decision on, but, uh, hopefully yet this week, uh, Secretary Burquest will be sending out a letter to, to further explain, uh, where we are going with this. But any of the projects that, for federal aid routes, that they're coded by a, a P in our project numbers, if you look in your list of projects that you have with us that are in our four-year STIP, our State Transportation Improvement Program, they're, uh, subject to drop out of the STIP, and we can simply write you a check for the monies that are in your account. Now, obviously, we, we do not have the funds available to write, uh, all the local government any's, a check for the total amount in their account, so they're still determining what that limit will be, but those that have small balances in their account will likely get a check for ninety cents on the dollar of what's in there, meaning you'll get the, the federal portion, and the state will add their ten percent match into that account for you. Those that have higher balances in that, the, the proposal is to write a check over a three-year period, so you get a third this, uh, July one, they will draft that, and then the next two years you will get, uh, the other two-thirds allocations. And then from that point on, you will continue to get the federal allocation just pa, as a pass-through to you. So the, the SWAP program, as, as you've, you've known it the last couple of years, it will not be an option. It will, it will be, uh, uh, automatic, and will come directly to you. Uh, the, the details of what requirements will go with that, we, we don't know. Uh, the, the agreement that we've had in the past with the SWAP program was that it had to go in your road and bridge project and be used on the roads. It couldn't be used for purchase of equipment. Uh, we're still discussing that. Uh, it, it's our opinion that, uh, once it goes into your road and, and bridge fund, that, uh, it, it should come with all the, the state legal requirements that you're able to use any of those funds on, so we don't wanna tie it down to, to restricting it from any of the, the needs that you might have for your road and bridge projects. As far as the bridge program, uh, I'm sure most of you are aware with Senate Bill one, uh, the passage and, and the governor's signature on that last week, uh, that will come into effect April one, and we are in the process of establishing the bridge grant program from that, uh, with the acronym of BIG, that will, you will see quite often with that. Uh, that does take administrative rule process before we can actually finalize the program and get it up and running. Historically, that's, you know, we still have to work through the legislature and, and have them approve the administrative rules, and that's historically taken, uh, about eighteen months to do, and we are trying to put that in process where we have it up and running by this fall. So we, uh, we had anticipated the legislation and done a lot of groundwork ahead of time. Uh, we do have a, a Advisory Council put together. Uh, Commissioner Dwayne Sutton from Brown County was the representative that was appointed from, uh, the County Commission Association to represent the county commissioners on that, that council. We do have two highway superintendents on there. There's representation from the class one, class two cities, uh, the, the Local Transportation Assistance Program, Federal Highway, and, and then, uh, the state DOT is, sits on that, so there is representation. We, we are trying to put things together. Uh, some of the requirements obvi, that was listed in the bill was that the, the county must have a wheel tax and have a five-year transportation plan to be eligible for the grant. Uh, thankfully, Brookings County already has the wheel tax, so you are eligible in that regard. Uh, and, uh, we do have a, a subcommittee of that Advisory Council currently working on what the transportation plan requirements will be to qualify you for the grant. Uh, we do not anticipate that it will be very difficult for, for, uh, most everybody to, to fill, fulfill that requirement. Most of your, your, uh, highway superintendents do have a, a plan set up, and it's just more so to, uh, formalize that and, and get it, get it approved. So, uh, we hope to have that up and going July one is when we will see new money coming in for that program, the two million dollars that the state has committed into adding into that program. Uh, October one is when we will see another one point seven five million transferred into that program. And then every quarter thereafter, you will see another one point seven five, and then every July, you'll see the other two million come into that. So we won't be in full effect of the fifteen million dollars that's in that program until 2019. Twenty nineteen is, is the end of our current STIP. So currently, uh, Brookings County has, uh, three prod, three bridge projects that are in our four-year STIP. We are fully committed into fulfilling the requirements that, that we said we do within our STIP. So those three bridge projects will, will stay, uh, coordinated, and, and we will work through those on getting them complete. You also have fourteen other projects that you have submitted resolutions for that do not fall within that four-year plan.
Quick question for you.
You bet.
Of those three that we have on there, you will plan on continuing out with the engineering, the whole work like we've done before?
Correct. We will, we will follow through on the same process we have been doing with those.
And that's the first three? And there's a sheet that, we have a sheet here. I don't know, do you have the same thing? Uh, oh, but you're aware of them. Okay, all right. So the next one, that one on our sheet, twenty twenty, would, is, now we're in the new rules by that.
That's right. The, the other fourteen that you have submitted resolutions for, they will, uh, be in competition with all the, the other twelve hundred bridges across the state that are, that are eligible for the, the grant.
And that'd be resubmitted?
You will have to resubmit, and there'll be an application process for that.
That needs to be designed yet.
Yeah, that's correct.
Even though we have these bridges coming up in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, of these other bridges or substance structures throughout the county, we would be able to fill out the grant and submit after you get everything ready. And if one of those would be approved, we'd be able to do that in two thousand fifteen or two thousand, or two thousand sixteen, seventeen?
Yeah, as soon as we get the bridge grant up and going, it, you know, that, any of those structures will be eligible for that. So, yeah, it would, we, we hope to have, uh, our first announcement of the grants, uh, either late winter or early spring of this coming year. Well, it, it'd be a matter of, of how quick we can work through in getting the designs of those done. Uh, it, it really depends on if it's a box culvert or a bridge, as to how much of the, uh, geotechnical, uh, investigation needs to be completed in order to do a design, so that, that's kinda key on, on how quick we'd be able to get some of those. Box culverts, we could potentially have those, uh, to construction within a little over a year's time from the grant, but, uh, again, that will depend a lot upon, uh, your consultant and their ability to get out and do a lot of that.
And so, leading up to my next question, and maybe you'll cover this down the road, is that in the new program, you won't be providing engineering services, any of that kinda stuff. We'll have to do that ourselves.
That, that is one of the topics that is still, uh, in discussion right now. The, because the bridges are, will still be controlled through our, our, uh, federal bridge inspection program, and, and DOT does have specific requirements that we have on reporting on that, uh, we will still have some limited control on that, and, and like I said, we don't really know what that, that full control is. Right now, the proposal is that the bridge projects will still be let by DOT, uh, design let and administered by DOT. But, uh, you know, that, that, again, that's something that we're still trying to work through.
Okay.
No, that, no problem. I, I, I wanna make sure I answer your, your questions that you do have. Any, uh, the safety projects that we're doing, uh, we just, uh, had been working on, on the signing project. Uh, um, I know that, that Dick had a request in to take a look at, at some possibility of doing a, uh, some rumble strip or rumble stripes in a certain location. Any of those, uh, they're, they use federal safety funds, and, and those can still be programmed and, and done i- in the same fashion that we have in the past. Oh, the, the pavement markings, that's, that's another, uh, uh, thing that we've done. Statewide, we've, we've been allocated five hundred thousand dollars, uh, in the past years to, to help local governments with their pavement markings on their local roads. Uh, with the increased state revenues, uh, our secretary has made a determination that he's gonna double that program, so we will be able to offer, uh, some additional funding to be able to go towards, uh, doing some additional pavement markings if you so wish.
Doug, could you touch on, since we do have a positive balance in our, uh, STIP program, how you anticipate the payout will be and the amount of time or the window of time that you anticipate it might take for us to get paid?
The, the proposal right now is that the checks will be drafted, uh, July one, the start of the, the new state fiscal year. And again, that really will depend on what the, the balance is on your account, whether you get, uh, one, one check to deplete your account down, or whether that will do, be divided out over, uh, over three years. And I know you just had a project that just came on through, so I don't have the exact numbers that you have in your account right now to, to, to tell you what that amount is, so.
Yeah, and we also, one of the, they're gonna touch on this too, hopefully, um, the, the top of the list is our road project for Highway seventy-seven north. They won't no longer be, uh, handling any of that stuff. That'll all be done by us. However, um, that will be completed. It's already been bid. Boz won the bid for that, so that won't change, and it'll certainly change our balance once we pay the, the, our share of that project. So, uh, other than that, the bridges, and then there's also the Gun Rain Bridge that's also been let. Linda has that listed down further, uh, Structure two oh nine dash one fifty. So really, we have four items that will be taken care of before the STIP goes away. The rest are all legitimate. They've been resolutions turned in. The bottom half are actually projects we turned resolutions in, but again, they weren't scheduling them. They'd already, uh, cut that off. But just so you're aware, and we'll, we'll touch on that further when you're, after you ask questions for, of them.
Thank you, Dick.
That's kinda what we have, or we're more than happy to try to answer any questions you do have on, on what we have coming up.
So those resolutions, will we have to redo those?
Anything for the bridges, they, we'll actually go through a, an application process.
Okay.
I might explain a little further on what we're looking at doing with our bridge program. We're gonna try to take those new monies and break them down to, to three categories. Obviously, over the years, you know, we, we've spent approximately six to seven million every year, and I'll just throw out, you know, for the last ten mil, ten years, you know, we, we spent between sixty and seventy million on putting new bridges across the state. Well, the, the number one priority is we gotta make sure that, that we maintain those, those assets out there. So the discussion has been to dedicate a, a portion of the new revenues to doing preservation-type projects on those bridges. We would like to see, uh, them eligible to be, have epoxy chip seals on them, for example, or whatever, uh, minor, uh, type of projects to preserve those, to make sure that they last absolutely as long as we can get them to last. Uh, and in addition to that, uh, any, uh, any bridge that is currently eligible for rehabilitation or replacement, the proposal is that we will do that initial hydraulic survey, and, uh, whether the county elects to pursue a grant after we do that initial survey, or elects to, to process that, uh, and do the, the project on their own, uh, the, the grant monies will assist in paying for that initial hydraulic survey to determine whether it's a, a box that's needed, or, or a bridge, or, or, uh, maybe something, something different in there. Uh, so it, it's kind of a three-stage process we're looking at doing, and, and what, you know, the, it's no guarantee that once the, the hydraulic survey is done, that you would be, uh, awarded a grant for the, the bridge replacement or reconstruction, uh, but, uh, you know, we, we will, we'll try to commit to doing those first, uh, first steps throughout the process to help make sure everybody under, get some assistance there.
Mr. Chair?
Um, with that grant application, um, are we gonna need to hire, you, you feel we'll be needing to hire, um, engineering, uh, company to do our applications, or will we be able to go off our, uh, current bridge inspection program, uh, information? Or will we be able to go off our, uh, current bridge inspection program, uh, information to fill out these, uh, applications?
I think the application process will be simple enough that, that the counties will be able to, to do them themselves. Obviously, some of our smaller communities that own bridges, uh, they, they may need some assistance with that. They don't quite have the, the resources or the, the records that, that the, the counties do have. So the, we're working with the planning districts and, and incidentally, we do have a representative on the planning district on our advisory council as well to, to assist them with their, uh, applications and, and projects. But yeah, you should be able to, to have all the data that, that you need, uh, to be able to fill out the application.
The, um, plan, the five-year plan, do you have any guidelines for that yet? Anything that's different than what we have right now in our master transportation plan or?
I, I don't have any of the details on it right now. Again, we've been trying to work through, through that. I, I envision it being fairly simple. You know, the, the intent of, uh, the legislators, when they put that requirement in there was to make sure that, that there is an open public process in, in, uh, uh, determining which projects are being constructed in each of the counties. So, uh, for you to list out what you plan on doing the next five years and give the public a, an opportunity to comment, I think that kind of meets the intent of what they were looking for. So we will have some, some guidelines for you of that and, and even, uh, a draft proposal you could, could use, uh, through that process. But, you know, like I said, in, in most cases, your highway superintendents do have, uh, a, a plan already laid out and it's just a matter of adopting that into it and formalizing it.
Other questions? Yes, Dick.
Are they still going to have that meeting on Thursday, uh, to try to sort out some of these policies or possible guidelines they might have for this application process or not?
If you're referring to the, the Transportation Commission, no, this, this topic was not added to the, the State Transportation Commission agenda. It, it has been directed within our department. So hopefully, we will see the, the notice come out even prior to that.
Okay. How about, could you just kind of share with them too, the way the federal government is leaving us in limbo with their transportation bills and temporary funding? It, it really adds a different dynamic to all this planning, so it might not hurt to.
Yeah, the, right now, and, uh, if, if any of you had followed some of the presentations that were given to the legislature with regard to our federal funding, uh, our federal highway bill did expire last October. It has, uh, a continuation on through May of this year. And, uh, with the unknown revenues coming in for, uh, from the federal funds, you know, that is always subject to change. We, we could, uh, uh, see new requirements come through in a new highway build that, that would, uh, turn us on our ear and, and have to, to, to do some additional measurements to try to accommodate that. But, um, I, I think the, the move that we've done here on trying to, to remove the, the, the federal program from the local entities and trying to direct this all with, with, uh, state revenues is, is, uh, hopefully tried to stabilize the, the, the budgeting and programming that you're able to do at a local level.
Follow-up. I'm a new commissioner a couple of years and my only knowledge, this basic question of roads was being on them till I got here and, and quite a bit I hear, oh, we, that'd be the max on our federal, on our county roads. We can't add another mile, we'd be over our max. With this funding program that's being proposed, uh, that's really not a factor anymore.
It, it's really not a factor. There, there is some other requirements that we maintain our, our federal aid system, you know, in the breakdown of how, uh, you have for your, your, uh, functional classifications. But largely, as far as funding is concerned, it will not have an, an impact anymore. You will be able to use your funding on any of, of your roads, whether they're a, a primary or a county secondary.
Okay, thank.
Quick question. Um, this is more dollars and cents and stuff. Basically, we fill our road and bridge fund through our wheel tax and license plate fees and then the commercial. So our, our main source of revenue is not changing, so we're, we're going to be okay. We're not pulling money away from something to fill the road and bridge fund, correct? This is over and above?
That's correct. And there, uh, with the new legislation, you do have, uh, increased revenues in those, those same categories or the opportunities for additional revenue.
But, but I'm just looking at our little, I think, we had that little chart there that we got, we got a copy of that. It works pretty good, you know, and, and I'm just looking at the numbers here and there's supposed to be 17.3 million available. And then part of it, 58% goes to local government highway bridge fund, and that's the fund that we use to do our stuff, right?
That's correct.
But 7 million is going to go to that big, so that only leaves three left. So that's going to get distributed, those, those three million are going to get distributed out to the counties or how's that?
Well, the one little deceiving thing on that chart is that the money that's going in, there's not all new money. There, there's quite a bit of existing monies that come through there. Your, your separation of the 58% and the, the 41%, that was written into state law and has been there for a long time on, on the divi- you know, the funds. The chart that you're looking at there, uh, that was provided by the governor's office is just talking about the new revenues coming into that.
I got you.
So yes, of, of the new revenues going into that, 7 million will be transferred into, uh, the, the bridge grant fund. The, the remaining three on that side of, of the chart,
Yep.
gets distributed by the formula that's actually written into the, the, uh, codified laws.
Okay.
Years and years ago, all the counties got together and, and agreed upon that specific formula on how they're, they're divvied out.
What about the 7.5 on the other side?
That 7.5 additional, uh, will go directly into the, the county's account.
Okay.
Yep.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And those, those are, uh, those are based off of your license plate fees. So the, the, the counties that, that collect license plate fees will just retain that money. There's, uh, there's no formula divvy on that. So obviously, the, the higher populous counties will, will see a greater benefit of, of those new funds than, than some of the others.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
One of the things they talked about was increase of budget 20%. We're not, probably won't see those for another couple of years for, so for budgeting purposes, it's probably not prudent to do that now for next year's budget. Maybe wait a year?
That's a very good question. You know, uh, the, the, it will certainly have a, a bigger impact here in Brookings County because of the populace you have from, from one of the class one cities within your, your county. So the average of 20% is, is something we just threw out there as an average on that. But again, that was, that was one of the, the, uh, state legislators', uh, primary comments that, that they wanted to see, uh, these new monies, uh, be an increase to budgets rather than simply supplementing and, and replacing general fund income that you had in there. So again, that was the intent, was to try to make some improvements in our system.
Okay. Anything else?
I, I'd just like to thank you both for coming out. Initially, I talked to Noel and I thought we were going to be talking more about the old program, but this come up, now we're talking about the new program and everything else. So I, I just thank you for all the help you've given us in the past and hopefully work with you in the future, so.
One quick question for you. Um, we have the wheel tax and I think we have a transportation plan, but I'm not sure we have a bridge improvement plan. Is there a difference?
There, there is a component of the transportation plan that, that will have to, to have a bridge improvement program to make you eligible for the grant. So yeah, that's something that, that, uh, like I said, we'll try to lay out some guidelines that we have within that. But, you know, in order for a, a bridge to qualify for the grant, it would have to be listed in your five-year plan as being a, a top priority project for the county. So that's, that's something that we'll try to incorporate in and, and yeah, there will be, have to make some modifications to your transportation plan to do that.
So similar to a, a list of priorities, similar to what we have now, like with the STIP. Basically, we have these listed in priority. This is what we were asking for. So we need to have something like that in our transportation plan, uh, and then you can see that and say, okay, these are long-term. Okay.
Correct.
I think we can handle that.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming.
You bet. If you have any other questions.
I imagine we'll, may ask you to come back when some of, but we'll let you get some ground under you for, yeah.
Names of that, that committee that's going to decide that too, so.
You bet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Well, we've got a lot of ways to go here. Back on our routine business, Kay, action to approve appointment to Housing and Redevelopment, uh, Commission. We have an applicant.
We have actually two applications for the one position. Yes.
Oh, I didn't flip the page right. Yeah. Uh, normally, when there's more than one, we have a, a motion to approve a person. Well, it's nice that we have a choice. Uh, many times we have these, uh, we don't.
Mr. Chair, I might be able to provide some insight as I know one of the applicants, uh, he, and I certainly don't want to speak on his behalf, but I think he saw the opening indicating that there was nobody filling the position and, uh, didn't know that the prior person had resubmitted. And I think the day he turned his application in, Michelle said she had just received Cindy's application that day as well. So, uh, I know he is interested, serves on the Valga Commission for this, uh, but certainly understands, I think, if the current person wanted to continue.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to thank him for his application. However, I think it would be prudent for us to, um, for continuity purposes, to, uh, have Ms. Bosch in. And with that in mind, I would make a motion that we put Cindy Bosch in that position.
Moved by Miller. Second, Krogman, uh, for Cindy Bosch. And, uh, question or discussion?
Thank you for that information, Abby.
Question, I mean, does the Brookings Housing Commission just look at the city of Brookings? Or is Brookings County as a whole?
It's Brookings County.
County, I would assume.
Yeah, and, and we have our chair be going to those meetings. Don't you go to those meetings?
I haven't, to be honest. Am I, I'll double-check my list. No, I have not been notified of a meeting or... And I guess we'll look into that. Thank you.
Yeah.
For sure, if that's Brookings County Housing.
Yes, it is.
City of Valga has their own Housing and Redevelopment Commission also. So I just, I didn't know if this, this is the City of Brookings Housing and Redevelopment Commission, or is it county's?
Yeah, it's, we are, we are ex officio on that board.
Well, thank you.
Yes, it's the chairs.
I missed that meeting and I missed it when I went through it. But I have not been notified of a meeting, so I guess Stacy, uh, Stacy, you get notifications of the meeting?
I have not. I, I have not, no.
I guess, um, do you have their address?
Talk to Mike on that.
Huh?
Commissioner Wyseth, talk to Mike Folsalzer on that.
Okay, just my thought process on the question. If it's just City of Brookings, it makes sense to have somebody in the City of Brookings on that. But if it's county-wide, we can also continue to have diversification in our, on our board by having other commissioners from other towns. That would be my, my thought there too. I totally agree with having Cindy on there, but I think it's something down the road, uh, to, to take a look at, so.
Thank goodness it's not a voting member. It's just ex-official, but... I haven't missed, yeah, she will be, but I'm not. I, I missed a vote. Which I'd feel bad about. Okay. Um, any other question or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Wyseth?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Kay, I'll, action to approve Brookings County Strategic Plan. Your motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Krogman, Pierce. Okay, discussion.
Can we talk about Abby's recommended changes first?
Yeah. Stacy had sent this out to all the departments asking for some feedback, and so I thought that's what we were directed to do. So that's what I did, and I think I may have been the only one, but, uh...
I was going to refer to as a staff member, but, uh...
Most of what I had submitted, if I go down to my changes here, you know, there was a couple, um, punctuation marks. I just tried to make everything format-wise cohesive. So the first page, I think that's all those changes would be, um, looking to...
Seems like there was a punctuation, and it didn't show up when I printed it out. Like there was, yeah, oh, there it is in the colons, uh, way up on top, yeah.
Anything where there's not a text box, it was typically a punctuation mark. Under Goal Four, Objective One, just, that's the correct title of that document, is the Conference of Land Use Plan, not the zoning plan. So I just added that for accuracy's sake. Under Object, Goal Four, Objective Four, I mean, this is just language. It probably does not make a difference. I didn't know if you consider those entities governmental entities, um, for purposes of this document. I just thought there may be room for more clarification there. Certainly, it's not, uh, it's fine as is, but I guess I recommended something more along the lines of scheduling. What do I have? Schedule a minimum of one annual meeting between county agencies and resources to include municipalities, township, schools, universities, and other organizations as needed within the county.
Should we just talk about, I mean, hear you on everything, or do we want to talk about all the changes and see if we want to amend it anyway?
Uh, let's, let's go one at a time here. Uh, so far, land use colon, fine, right? Okay. Now, on the one she's busy about, let's talk about that.
I guess I don't have a problem with it. The change you're talking right there, changing it to what she had talked about?
Mm-hmm.
Which are you talking about?
Oh, uh, Objective Four, uh, changing governmental to a more descriptive, uh, actually what we're talking about.
So it'd be the first text box, and I guess I have a suggested replacement sentence there.
It's fine with me.
Other commissioners? Okay.
Then moving to Goal Five, uh, and again, these aren't necessarily a, uh, you know, I'm not saying I see legal concerns here, just comprehensively reading this document and making it as efficient as we can have it. Uh, reading this section. I guess to me, the more specific our objectives could be, I think the easier they will be to fulfill. And if that's not what the board's intent was, then you can certainly disregard these. But regarding customer service, if you look at Three, you're talking about the website work, and that's a very specific task you can accomplish, whereas One and Two, uh, to me, I guess are more abstract and don't read as specific goals that you would, you know, aim to complete and you can mark off. There, obviously, we do want to accomplish them, but there, you have different forms of objectives. So if you're fine with that, it's fine. I just wanted to point that out.
What happened with One and Two is that was cut and pasted from another list that was on the old plan.
So you're saying, uh, under Goal Five, Objective Three almost could be underneath Objective One?
Well, I think, um, you know, when we did the strategic plan, and correct me, is that, uh, our idea was to be more broad-based and more, and then a work plan would get into more detail. Now, what she's saying, I think,
Objective Three is more of a work plan.
Right.
I'm just saying that you're mixing and matching here. You have some broad concepts and some very specific tasks.
We did it several times and we corrected ourselves several times, but maybe this one got... We did it several times, and we corrected ourselves several times, but maybe this one got through the, and I guess is worth consideration of, well, go ahead, Leanne, you're...
I don't believe I read what Abby put in there to mean that she thought we should delete Objective Three and put it in our work plan. I think, I think Objective Three is good, and we should keep that. If I'm understanding what you're saying is we should have more concrete things for one and two, not that we should get rid of number three.
Right, and that's what I meant, and I guess I don't know, I haven't been involved in all the discussions, so if you feel that your work plan will address the specific goals, maybe that's the solution to the problem. But I, you know, really, it could be...
What I, my thought was, again, on this Goal Five, was this is something that will go to the department heads. This would be something that they should look at to carry out these strategic plans and these ideas. And one of them was Goal Five, exceptional customer service. And so, within each department, I was expected they would look at that and say, all right, what can we do to help customer service and continue to provide that? That better communication, better responsiveness, are the things that we would like to see. But how you do that would be up to work plans of each individual department. And each individual department's can be different. Treasure may be different than equalization, sheriffs may be different than, than that type of thing. I, I think Objective Three would be something, maybe, the commission, our commission office assistant would be something, that'd be something they would work towards, to work to establish communication and responsiveness to our point, that'd be something there. So, I would almost see that one as a work plan. I know we don't want to take it out, but I, I want this thing not to sit there and tell each department what we want them to do for communication responsiveness. We want them to know that it's a high priority for us, it's in our strategic plan, that's, that's something they should be working on on a yearly basis. And maybe we got two, two pointed on Objective Three to our department. That's something that maybe, you know, in the strategic plan or in the process down the next budget, that Stacy might come back under the commission department and say, these are the things I'd like to do to increase our communication responsiveness under our goal number five. So, I guess that was where I was kind of coming on a little bit there, but I'm open for, for that.
Well, when I first read everything, what we had, what her point, I didn't, I had a hard time finding anything wrong with it, I guess, but now that she brings up her point, and I'll just throw this out. On Objective Three, maybe we should continue to enhance and expand the counties and, and start again at expand the county's interactive communication tools, rather than list any of them. There might be one that we didn't even list that we should be doing. So, it just goes to the, that's our strategic plan, is to continue to enhance, expand the county's interactive communication tools, and take out naming them, and leave it as general as the other ones are, I guess, it's more abstract, but...
Although, what our, what our conversation was, what started that was we want to do something better with our website.
We can have, you know, Stacy work on that under her commission department and stuff, and do that. But, you know, for example, you know, Vicky, for the, you know, tags, now we have tags that you can buy at, well, much more convenient, kiosks and different things like that, you know, which is, again, good customer service, you know, and responsiveness to them to be able to do that. I think those are great ideas, and that's what I'd like to see from our department heads of those types of ideas throughout the whole county, you know, government. Our discussion with Dick, you know, today about being open on Friday or available, I think that's an important part in communication responsiveness for our people there to provide good customer service. But I want to hear that from them, not me tell them that you need to be open Friday, you know, and that kind of stuff, so. No, you don't have, you're okay, you're okay. Oh, through, okay. So, anyway, I mean, that's, that's, you know, I, I think three almost gets too much. We can ask Stacy to do that. I just want this thing to be something that the, the department heads can, can read, and they can work on.
And if I can just comment, I think the reason those stuck out to me is that the rest of your objectives are very specific. They are not abstract, they're specific tasks that we can accomplish. So, I guess my thought was perhaps, and I know you don't want to add a micromanaging aspect to it, but in my mind, I was thinking if there was some more specificity added to those, they might be on par with the other objectives. But if you feel it's fine the way it is, it's fine.
So, you feel we need to get more specific with one and two, leave three alone?
If you want to mirror the rest of your documents, then I would say yes.
And not that I want to talk about wording specifically, but part of what, what I think stands out there is that we're using a different format for Objective One and Objective Two, and we might do better if we're leaving them as they are, is to get rid of communication dash and just say, seek and encourage citizen input, so forth. And then, number two, instead, take out the word responsiveness in the hyphen, and just say, respond to citizens' requests in a respectful, timely manner. And that would make it fit a little bit more into the format we've got with the rest of the document.
I'd agree.
Yeah, I see the word, just right above, the word develop. Would you be satisfied, and I'm the furthest thing from a wordsmith, and I've said that before. And it's the truth, develop communication by seeking and encouraging and responsive. Develop responsive by understanding the need. Then, it's at least in the same format. But it doesn't change the substance particularly, but it does, it makes it an action item versus statement, yeah.
I mean, if the wording's better to make it an action item, does that make a difference? I mean, does that sound better, rather than a statement? Is that probably the, the case? So, that's mine.
So, we would change Objective One to start out, seek and encourage, and then whatever else we got there. On Objective Two, I think the chair and I said different things.
I think so, too.
What's that, Leanne, I didn't catch that.
I said, I think you and I said different things there. I think number two, instead of understand the need, I don't, I don't think we need to understand the need. What we need to do is respond to citizens' requests in a respectful, timely manner.
Sounds good.
And then, I think the last comment I had in here is very similar, under Goal Six. We're talking about a goal where we're basically being good stewards of the tax dollar. And to me, it just read funny, again, if you had intent behind it. I was not part of the drafting of this document, but to say that we're reviewing the strategic plan, I didn't understand how that pertained to being good stewards of the tax dollar. And then, again, reviewing the process on collecting county liens. I guess, the reason I commented on that is that's one of the many aspects that we can be good stewards of the tax dollar. And I guess, I just was curious why you selected that one.
I'm not sure either. When I read, that one, right away, I picked up, and I, I drew a line, moved it up to Goal Four. Which objective you want it to be, I don't care, but...
And, and that was, I, I know I was the person that brought that up. And that's because that's such a huge pot of money sitting there, and we need to be looking at that. And maybe that won't be on their, on the next plan we have, but I, I think that's a legitimate goal this year, for us to take a look at that and see if we couldn't be getting some monies back, if there's some other things that we could be doing, a lot of money.
So, I mean, it makes sense to me that it's under there, I just was curious, I guess. But other than that, it's fine.
Commissioners, your thoughts on...
Well, I guess, you know, I don't know if we need an amendment to the motion, or...
Well, we're going to have a heck of a motion, so, we haven't made a motion yet, have we?
I think I did, yeah.
We did, oh, except the, we got a heck of an amendment.
Here's what I would do, is I would amend my motion with the changes of, you know, the punctuation, the land use. The very first recommendation from our deputy state's attorney. In Goal Five, reword Objective One, Objective Two to what Leanne had said, and then, keep the rest of it the same. Not, not taking Abby's recommendation for Goal Six, leaving Goal Six the same.
I would second that.
Krogman, Pierce, second to amendment to the changes to the strategic plan. Any more question or discussion? Before we vote, would you read your reading of one and two? How'd you restructure that?
Stacy, have that down.
The first one would be to seek and encourage citizen input and feedback while informing and educating citizens.
Educating citizens, I don't have that in front of me.
Help me out, how do you seek and encourage citizen input?
Seek and encourage citizen input and feedback while informing and educating citizens about the county's obligations and services. And then, this Objective Two would just start with, respond to citizens' requests in a respectful, timely manner.
Okay, so, is it perfectly clear, and then, no changes to Goal Six? Is the amendment clear to everybody? Any more question or discussion? Call the roll.
On the amendment?
Yeah, well, I thought about that after I said it.
Jensen, Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wysett?
Aye.
Well, this strategic plan is very important, I guess, so...
You have to vote on the main motion as amended?
Yes, that's what I'm up to. I just want to make sure if there's any more questions or discussion concerning the motion before us as amended. Okay, call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen? Wysett?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Put down discussion of Senate Bill One, and we've learned a lot about it. Obviously, no action, but we, I just thought, for the purpose of... Would this be a good time? Yeah, you bet. Yes, this would fit, and part of it is that there's several things that fell back on the county. And, and obviously, we're not going to take action, I just thought maybe a little discussion as to whether you're interested in the wheel tax, are you interested in, well, where's all those different funding mechanisms? But if, any of the funding mechanisms, and we'd have to take, and I don't even know the timing of action on those, if we were even interested in doing any of them. So, I just thought, just for, let's talk about it.
Okay. Probably, the first thing that this Senate bill is going to create is a more local approach or control to major road and, and bridge projects. And she, Noel, didn't touch on it, but like this project, for example, that we scheduled in for seventy-seven going north a mill an overlay that'll take place this summer. Those projects were always very heavy into, into federal funds because it would involve so much money, like, like we've got it down as a million four thirty-five, and it'll more amount to like a million eight. Well, anyway, that's part of our planning process, and we could always kind of schedule that in. But it was at the mercy of the state to review and decide where the priorities for that money, where it would be spent. Well, now, since it's on a more local level, our project plans, priorities, road versus bridges, what we're going to develop, if you know, remember, he mentioned that it will most likely involve public input. In other words, we might have to have, what I would guess, an annual meeting, and it would probably be a good time to do it prior to, like, our budget, fiscal budget period, simply because then we would kind of have a little more backbone or justification for maybe choosing certain projects or spending certain funds this year versus pooling it until a future date. Another thing with establishing our budget, we're almost going to have to include a line that would be titled something in the order of like Capital Project Accumulation Fund. Just like the STIP program was, our allocation that we were given to us, it just kind of stayed in a separate account with the state. And when the need arose to, you know, follow through with that project, that money was there, and it was used for that. And the reason I, I think it would be good is because it would be something that might run into quite an accumulation of money, especially if we were going to try to do a bridge and a, a serious road project at the same, you know, calendar year. So, that being said, as a kind of a general overview, the sheets that I handed out, basically, the first one, that's just the eight and a half by eleven piece of paper, that was the projects that we'd already done resolutions for, and if you notice, on the back, there's, you know, four others. That's why it was important, if this program would have stayed in place, our projects would have received recognition or at least attention because they're in the program. If they weren't in the program, they weren't going to get any kind of notice whatsoever. So, after these four projects, the seventy-seven north, the gun range bridge, and the two north of Bruce, once they're done, then we're pretty much on our own as far as scheduling for replacements, rehabilitation, whatever. Something that I visited with Commissioner Krogman on a couple different times was how the importance of how we're looking at, was it really that valuable to keep certain projects within the STIP program? Maybe it would have been better to fund them locally and leave the big, more significant projects in there. Well, now, that all goes away, but we still got to use the same philosophy. We have to start putting together, how can we address, you know, is it, is it a more beneficial to do? Like, we're going to do at least one small structure under twenty feet each year, we're going to do one bridge each year, and we're going to do one significant road project each year, if, if the funds were available. Now, I don't think there's any mystery that, that I don't think you're going to see a big cash cow from this money. You're just going to see a different kind of rules and regulations at government. It's really going to put it on us to decide, and the public input is going to be very, probably vocal. Especially like with bridges, Larry, you know, the one south of White on twenty-five. We've got two boxes that are going in this year that would probably possibly get bumped if it was not up to a kind of a rhyme or reason, or a method to our madness type of thing that we want to portray to the, to the public. So, that being put aside, the first map is the one that has just the six projects. Those are the ones, those were the top six of the study we had bannered, do of structures under twenty feet, and what would be the reasons you would replace them, and why they kind of serve a purpose, but yet, it's not something that would be, we would have to make any kind of a special request for, or whatever. It, it would be something we could handle, those type of things. But yet, we still prioritize them by their condition and whatever, okay? And that will evolve as we go on, because we're going to keep looking at those structures. There were like thirty-one or thirty-five under twenty feet. And it might get to a point where we may only have one or two that, that might need to look at in the near future, but at least we're, we're keeping it in the, in the equation.
Quick question on that, then?
Yep.
And so, likely replacement for those are possibly bulked box culverts?
Yep.
That's what we're talking about here? And those run seventy-five thousand type of thing?
The ones that we're doing this year, the one that's four by eight will be, just the box now, is, is fifty-one thousand. The other one that's nine by five will be sixty-one thousand some dollars. And then, it'll cost roughly just shy of a hundred thousand to have them installed, plus buy the riprap and all that other stuff. So, you know, right in the neighborhood, the ones last year... So, you know, right in the neighborhood, the ones last year were one-twenty and one-fifty-one, I believe. This year, they'll be like one-sixty, one-seventy-two, somewhere's in there, thousand, hundred thousand.
Okay.
So then if you go to the next one that says statewide STIP projects, and, and that has the group, and it's quite a few. It would be on your, on your eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper. It'd be the top half, total projected cost for repair and replacement.
Dick, can I, do you want to put it up on the thing? Would that be easier?
Yeah, if you want to. Put it over here?
Maybe.
I suppose now we got it backwards, huh?
There we. Come on. Or maybe not. Why would this? No, that's not it. That's Tom's hauls. Tom's cough drops.
We see what you're having for lunch, but.
I know. Tom's got a pile of cough drops up here. I could put it up here, but I don't know if that would make any difference.
Because I don't.
Oh, wait. Here, you can keep your coffee.
Okay. So these projects are the ones that were in the STIP program, and we had them in early enough that they were actually scheduled. That's why you see a dollar amount affixed to each of these projects. Because the state, when they get them and they schedule them, they take current costs, and then they project out with an inflationary formula to come up with what would be, give us a, a good ballpark figure of what we could anticipate that project would cost. The ones below that are our last sheet where it just says resolutions sent to the state, but not in the STIP. And those are your, the rest of them on the eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper, plus the four on, on the back of the page. The reason these were submitted, or the resolutions were submitted, because their sufficiency rating, according to our bridge inspections, was less than fifty. And that's, that's the trigger point. Once it's below fifty, you are eligible to put it into this program. Now, they also have, right next to it, what's called a federal sufficiency rating. If the state or the feds would differ from what Banner or whoever does our bridge inspections would, by taking the criteria turned into them, if they come up with a different sufficiency rating, they go with the federal sufficiency rating. And, and ours, again, you can see these are all less than fifty. They follow almost a mirror image. There was a couple that were lower than, than what Banner gave them credit for. However, that's what we got to use as a criteria. Now, it has no bearing on the traffic that's using those bridges. It has no bearing on, you know, the length, the, the body of water or what it's crossing. It's just giving you an idea of what the condition of that particular structure is.
Can Banner come up with the highest to lowest ranking? You know, the worst deteriorated bridge to one that just hit the fifty mark?
Right. And, and we have that, I didn't bring that with me, but, but yes, I have that. And we just were waiting till we got the brand-new sufficiency ratings. And it's summarized just that way, Ryan. I'll make sure you get a copy.
Okay. Because I guess my thought process is, is it may not be as heavily traveled, but if somebody goes down, it doesn't make it any less important.
Exactly.
You know, so if there's one that's really in tough shape, I'm not sure how we're going to create our urgency or how we're going to create our level.
Right.
I guess I'd like to know where the cutoff is. If it's, okay, if it's below twenty-five, this is an immediate, or if it's something like that. Input from you that says, okay, between thirty and forty, we probably got ten, fifteen years left in this bridge. But you get below a certain number, you know, we're talking within five years, we need to be planning on something.
Right.
That's where I'd look for that input from you and them to, especially the DOT. If the DOT turns around and who said, we have a sufficiency rating of this, are they going to make that a high priority for us to get grant project or not?
That's what they said. Now they're going to turn it over to the DOT to come up with a criteria. But what they had told me last week was this committee that she mentioned. You know, there were a couple commissioners, couples legislators, blah, blah, blah. They were supposed to be coming up with some general guidelines that were going to be expected as far as even getting a grant submitted. And again, that was based on, you know, possibly daily traffic. The distance involved, if there was a detour, if the bridge was shut down. They also would look at possibly the, the ability for something, some alternative to be done. But that hasn't been determined yet, so I can't really tell you exactly. One thing I can show you on, on the one map, this one that has the projects but not on the STIP, if you notice up above on the top line in parentheses, those are the bridges that we've got derated. They can't take a, a legal load. And so that's what they're rated at. You're also going to see a new rating system come out in the very near future that will change that system around too. So I won't even touch on that until we find out more details of that program. But one thing that, that will definitely come up is some unplanned bridge work. The bridge south of White. I mean, that showed so much deterioration. That's why they, they derated it this year. That might be something that if a person looked further, there might be a rehabilitation aspect that we could touch on and, and bring it back up. It's, it's certainly not the oldest, and there's certainly some of these bridges on here that are showing their age, but they're in a location that really, it, it doesn't matter whether it's really able to handle a legal load. You know, they can't get there anyway with the road the way it is. So that's kind of everything in a nutshell with this bill. And it, and from my standpoint, it's, it's going to get a little more involved, obviously, because by a certain date, if they have, they might have this twice a year, they might have it once a year. But by those dates, it's going to be important that we have our hoop and a group to get, get stuff in there and get going. And I think we have a very good start because these alone, just that we had in the program that we did resolutions for, we first of all recognized a need. We recognized that, that there's costs involved with some of these things that may not happen as quickly as, as we would like it. But the flip side of that is, when they, the way the state was dealing with it, we were kind of at their mercy. If they thought Sioux Falls should have two more interchanges, they got two more interchanges. Where now, as we turn in our grants, hopefully, everyone will get equal representation and, and equal funds. So other than, if you've got any questions or whatever, and I think with our five-year road plan, you know, currently, the way we have it set up with doing culverts, doing overlays, and addressing the chip seal and crack filling and stuff like that, I'm almost positive that's sufficient to appease the state as far as having a plan of attack or a plan of action. With the bridges, I would assume the same thing. Probably the best thing to do would be to sit down and, and have a work session and kind of sort through what we think would be a ballpark amount each year. We want to commit to these structures and what we would have available to us that we could accomplish. And then just put that in a plan. These are priorities. If nothing changes, this is probably what we will, you know, follow. And I think that will be sufficient to, you know, keep, keep them happy. The, the thing that's really going to be different is, is not having them available for some of these road projects. Because, you know, they were pretty darn good about letting you know if, if, let's say, I wanted to do a Millan overlay, and they'd say, that ain't going to cut it, Dick. That, that's not money well spent for the condition the road's in. You know, they always did a preliminary inspection. They kind of gave me a viewpoint of their opinion as engineers of what would be your, probably your best approach. Well, that saved a lot when you'd go talk to Banner or CDI and, and want them to put together a plan. You'd already have kind of an idea of what you wanted to suggest to them. And then as they got into the details of drawing up those plans, they might come up with, with an alternative. And I could always go back and check with the state or have the engineering firm check with the state and see if, if they're missing something or why were they coming up with, this would be the best for Project XYZ, for example. And I guess we're in a much better condition than some of these smaller counties because they really, you know, have, have some serious problems with lack of manpower, lack of funding, and it's going to be a challenge for them, so.
Well, Chair, I guess I, I agree with you. I think we need to sit down and do a work session with you, with budget, you know, of what we have planned and what we already have committed to our projects and what will allow us to pull some aside to say, okay, here can be some matching funds for these if we get them. And also, you know what, we're going to do another three or four block, block culverts again or something. So I'd like to sit down and do a work session here when we get close to that budget and put that plan together with the help of all the staff involved. And so we can kind of get that, per our strategic plan, a five-year plan for our improvement projects and stuff like that, too.
Right.
I just have a question. The, the way we have the bridges prioritized for what they need, okay? The speakers we had here today and then out in Pier when we were there last week all indicated that there's going to be a portion, and it sounds like a third of those bridge money, set aside for preservation of bridges. Do we have some kind of priority list for what we need to be doing for preservation? Do we already have that tacked down?
Slightly. Part of our bridge inspection program, they come out with, this bridge would be a candidate for rehabilitation. This candidate would be definitely, has to be replaced. This candidate could possibly have something. So there is, the mind-boggling thing here in Brookings County, you know, we've got a hundred and sixty bridges and sixty-some structures. So it's, it's not an easy process to, you know, just group them and, and say this away. But yes, that's the best I could tell you right now is, is that we just go by what could be rehabilitation. Now, when they mentioned that money that would possibly be used for like epoxy chip seals and stuff like that, that again would be something that we haven't necessarily explored because there's been quite a significant amount of money that's required to do those types of things. However, it's going to be a lot better money spent than letting it deteriorate till we can afford to replace it. The thing that's difficult on some of that preservation funds is with traffic that's possibly causing the deterioration, preservation-type projects don't work. But on your little bridge out somewheres that gets mainly car traffic and, and just a little local traffic, I think it'd be fantastic.
Because it just seems to me like we might have two priority bridge, priority bridge lists, one for the preservation stuff because they're going to set aside some money for that, and then the rest for our big bridge projects.
Exactly. Yep.
Yeah. We got our work cut out. Dick, while, while you're there, there were three forms of funding which, as we go through this process, and I just want to make this, we had, we were all together in Pier, and just for the public knowledge, I guess, that there's, everybody leave with the idea that we have three additional methods that we may or may not. And we, and I just want, for discussion purposes, and obviously, until we get a plan, there's no use raising money for no plan, for, you know, just for the heck of it. But the three I look at is the wheel tax increase and the, on the four to five and the number of wheels. And if I'm clear, we can assess sixty-tenths per thousand dollars of taxable valuation. Is that, that was the other third choice we had, right?
If we wanted to raise additional funds.
If we, above and beyond all this that's going on. And that's premature, but I would say right now, I don't want to speak for you guys, but not really interested until we've got our current funds, the new funds, readjust to whatever the rules are and get our plan in place. But I think for the public's point of view, right now, I would say, unless there's a disagreement, the commission at this point is not going to enact until a need has been demonstrated for the additional fees.
I think we need to see how this is all going to play out. They don't even have their rules established yet.
Yep.
You know, that, I mean, we're going to be getting a lot of criteria, I think, from them. And until we receive that, I don't see how we can act on any of this other stuff.
Yeah. I just, you know, the fact that we had the coincidence of being there after the bill passed, that we were made aware. But just for the public's point of view, we're sitting tight.
Right. And some of this stuff, projects will have quite a timeline. You know, if you've got a large bridge, you're not going to design it in a week and put it out to bids in a month and, and have to come up with the money. You know, you're going to have that pool of money you're going to have to project out, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then item N is just a discussion on twelve oh one, which happened to do with the simple majority versus the supermajority in planning and Board of Adjustment, conditional use permits. And I guess, does the commission have anything they want to direct Bob to, for example, run by the Planning and Zoning Commission, get their opinion? You want your own opinion or whatever? I'm just throwing it out.
I don't think the copy of the statute that's in our packet is what was passed.
Oh, you mean that it was modified?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the old one.
This is the old one.
Yes.
That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, there's just, but in general, the simple and supermajority is by the bulk of the, the devil's in the details, I know. But, but the general intent of the bill was to offer that to county commissions. And I didn't know if you wanted the Planning, Zoning to discuss it, or you want to discuss it a later date, or what your thoughts were. No thoughts. Too soon.
Too soon. And I think that as we're working on the comprehensive plan, that the Planning and Zoning Board will discuss that. From my observation so far, I don't think there will be an interest. But obviously, I'm only one vote on the board in changing how we, how we vote.
Okay, so the county commission doesn't have any thoughts, Bob. But I would say that you should make aware to the Planning, Zoning that that bill's been passed and what that means to them. And, I mean, it means nothing if we don't change anything. It's just that we can, and so.
That's correct. And I plan on addressing it with Deputy State's Attorney in detail. And then, of course, my, my Planning and Zoning Commissioner to get a handle on exactly what we've got. We are probably going to have to change from having our Planning Commission approve conditional use permits, change that over to the Board of Adjustment because we're the only one out of sixty-six counties doing it that way. But, and I think twelve oh one will allow us to do that rather easily. We'll, we'll keep the board informed, the county commission board.
Thank you. Commission Department Director report.
My staff report was included in the packet. We, two of the, two grants for the two-hundred-and-thirteenth Street project or the Novita Row. We, two of the, two grants for the 213th Street project or the Novita Road, that GOED grant, the $400,000, is good for four years. We signed that on, in November of '13, so we have four years from them, so we're still in good shape with that one. The agribusiness grant, it did have a deadline of January of 2016. I, I visited with Paula Huzingay from the DOT and it appears that they're willing to change that, you know, once we get our construction timeline in place. If this project is going to go out beyond this year, that just a simple amendment to that agreement is what would be needed. So once we get that timeline figured out, we can visit with them more about that. The most recent SDACC legislative update was included in your packet and some information on Senate Bill One. Of course, we've been talking about that all day. I have Bah Hub sent out an email about the tabletop exercise. I did attend that a couple of weeks ago. That was an excellent, excellent tabletop exercise, very eye-opening, but that was a great, great informative day. At eight-county meeting last Monday, Representative Jason Frericks was there and handed out some information on, and so I provided that. That was on the drainage boards throughout the state. So I included that in your packet so everybody had that. I did receive some quotes for the carpet cleaning for first floor of the courthouse, you know, between $250 to $560. Guess just direction from you, if that's something you want to pursue for this year, if we want to wait and budget that for 2016.
Longer it sits, the faster it wears the fabric. That's my opinion.
I agree, and those carpets have been in there for three years now and we haven't cleaned them. I think we should clean our carpets.
Do that on, okay. And I also included the agenda for the post-legislative luncheon and then the intergovernmental conference is following that. That is coming up next Wednesday, or no, it's tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yes.
Oh, my, yes.
That's the next Wednesday.
Okay, yeah, it is the next Wednesday. It's tomorrow. Also, information on the Chamber has a Leader Cast event coming up in May. If you want to get registered for that, it might be, maybe a little soon, but if, if you're interested, just let me know and I can get you registered for that event. I think all of you got this in your mailbox, too, but an invitation to the Volunteers of America Rise and Shine Benefit Breakfast, May 7th, down in Sioux Falls. Other things I handed out today, we already discussed my, the MOU, the Senate Bill One, that was at Conference Lori Schultz's presentation that she did out there on Thursday last week, so I made copies of that and copies of the property assessment taxation that Michael Howdyshell did from Department of Revenue and then Rod Forten with Legislative Audit, his presentation as well, in case we didn't get copies of that. And then there were just two emails, too, that I just wanted to make sure that I passed along about the passing of Dennis Arbach, Commissioner in Walworth County. And then there's also the GFMP Commissioner Meeting coming up, April 1st and 2nd. And that is all I have, unless you have other questions for me.
Well, I, I do, we advertised the bids for 34th, correct?
Yes, the advertisements for the bids for 34th went out yesterday. They'll be, we'll advertise this week and next week. On Thursdays, it should be in the papers. And then we are going to open bids April 7th at 2:00 in the afternoon, here upstairs, here in the community room.
Procedurally, since, I don't, I don't know, I guess, shouldn't the commission act on the bids? And, and we're already meeting in the morning, aren't we, on the 7th? If, if we need to approve, bids open, but then we have to take action.
Right.
Yeah, and so we're meeting that.
But we wouldn't have the bids because of the timeline. You have to wait so many days from that first publication in order to open bids. This is, this is our timeline.
Right, so the 7th is the day.
The 7th, we will open. You won't approve them then until your next regular meeting, or you can schedule a special meeting.
That's, that's what I'm after, is that, do we want to schedule a meeting later in the afternoon or another day? That, that was my question.
I, I believe they, engineer will have to go through the bids and make sure that bid is all in order before we give them also.
Okay, very good point. And so what would be the, I'm just trying to move this along a little bit.
We're already scheduled.
No, no, but how long does that usually take, the engineering approval of the bids? I mean, is it a week? So the question, do you want to wait till the 21st to take action, or do you want to schedule a time?
Did, when Joyce was here talking to us, are we actually going to be here on the 14th doing something on those appeals? I, it doesn't look like it'll take long.
Oh, yes.
But will we be meeting that day?
Well, unless there wasn't any, good point, unless there's, which I can't imagine nobody coming, but so that would be a, a good time. We're scheduled at 8:30.
We, we could do that. We could convene as the Board of Equalization and handle the equalization business and then, you know, adjourn that, reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners and take action on the bids that day. We can very easily do that.
But basically what she said, there's only four, and if the local Board of Equalization can't handle that, it would come to us. So if, if they are able to take care of all those four, then we're not required to meet.
She would still go through all of the reports. You would still meet.
Okay, very good. Okay, that, that works good, I think, okay?
So we'll be here at 8:30 for sure on the 14th to do the equalization stuff, whether or not there's an appeal. And then we'll go into the bids, okay?
Yes, very good. All right, that takes care of it. Any other questions, Stacey? Okay. Commission reports and discussion items. Oh, wait a minute, sorry. Oh, I thought I'd give you the day off. No. Deputy State's Attorney report.
I don't have anything to report anyway, just if anyone has any questions on 34th or Novita, just I'm working away with all of our agencies on those.
And thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. Now, Commissioner Reports, Discussion Items.
Okay. On March 12th, with all of you, I was at the emergency training and I would like to thank Bob and Richard for all the work they did on that because that was a really good program. And went to the training with all of you in Pier last week for, for new commissioners. And I have to say, I learned a lot. And I learned a lot about how to do the tax computations on real estate. That, that stuff was just, the program was excellent. I attended the Planning and Zoning County Comprehensive Plan Meeting on March 20th. We finished reviewing the ag uses and we looked at natural resource zones in our ordinances and we've reviewed the aquifer protection ordinance. And I think we're going to have one more meeting and then we'll maybe see something in writing. So we're starting to get there and that's pretty exciting. On 22nd, I went to the fundraiser for the Veterans Memorial. They had over 700 people turn out. It was, it was a great turnout for that. And then Abby and Tom and Stacy and Vicki and I met yesterday on the Liquor License Subcommittee. And we should have some recommendations in written form, in the form of a proposed ordinance to you for our next meeting, I believe. We'll be able to have that done. Because we don't have any Brookings County ordinances on liquor licenses at this time, we are looking at, at putting together a comprehensive ordinance for that. We, we reviewed some ordinances from other counties and we looked at the state statutes. And the proposed ordinance will include, among other things, the application process, how we're going to deal with Sundays and holidays, any special event licenses, transfers, and a fee for the video lottery machines. And you'll see all that in writing soon. Thank you.
Yes, and I believe our time schedule would be that you see the recommendations and then have a discussion. And a rewrite would be the 21st. We have time, so I mean, we don't have to make it up on the dime. But when you see your packet and you see that, start marking it up and we'll have that discussion to try to get to a formal statement, a formal ordinance. Is that it, Leann?
That's it.
Okay, Jensen?
I also attended the tabletop exercise Bob had. It's a great turnout, showing a lot of cooperative efforts by every, all the local emergency people and I think it's a good, good deal. Went to the eight-county meeting in Bryant. That was another good turnout, great food. Congratulations to Stephanie on her appointment. Also had a Promotion Expansion Committee meeting the other night. The Brookings County 4H are working with a new program of robotics. They're trying to gain enough people to participate, hopefully to get a team ready to go to the state 4H in, here on this fall. They currently have 10 robots and they only have five computers. I want to keep in mind if, if we're surplusing or any ideas on how we could get five more computers so they could be matched with the 10 robots. The robots, you can program them individually, but you can also program with the computer if, if there was, be some way we could find some surplus ones. Marty, big thank you to Marty Stanwick here. He came up with the ones they are currently using. Marty and Joe Wallner kind of initiated this program through, I can't remember the group you're with. Yep, ARP. And they're, Joe Wallner was very happy about this, seeing them being put to use. There is a Leadership Brookings Activities Jamboree, March 30th, from 3:30 to 7:00. And I believe it's at the Swiftel. And it's actually activities in, in the community offered to the youth of Brookings County. And the 4H Promotion Expansion Committee will have a booth there promoting the robotics and other 4H programs. I also attended the Beta's Pot of Gold activity on Tuesday, the 17th. They had a lot of people, I got there a little bit late, a lot of people there. I'm not sure on the amount that money that they raised. I do know they sold all their tickets for the Pot of Gold and they actually raised $5,000 towards Beta through the tickets and Mark Cradaville was the final winner and the $5,000 winner, so very good activity, I guess. That's all I got.
Commissioner Miller?
On March 10th, I had an Extension Board meeting. We have two summer interns hired and, and the fact we asked about it, we have to receive the MOU. There are a couple of things, you serve on the Swiftel, right?
I do.
Yeah. A couple of things came up in that meeting and at one of the last big concerts they had, they put in an extra 500 amp outlet on our north wall. And they used, they hooked up to the water spigot and it just, just to keep everything the way it should be, maybe we should check and make sure how those funds, how that's being, if we're being charged for that.
We have the Swiftel Boards meeting this week. And could you just send me, so I've got some detail and I'll ask about it.
On March 12th, I, I was working, but I did stop in over the lunch hour and listen to part of the LEPC meeting and I did get to listen to a little bit of the emergency exercise at the fire hall. When I was Chair, I attended some of these exercises and I know how much work Mr. Hale puts into them. And I could see once again that this was an excellent exercise and I was glad to see that the other commissioners were there. On March 16th, I attended the eight-county meeting in Bryant. Several legislators were there and updated us on the session, which is always interesting. And it was, it was a good time to ask questions and, and they enlightened us considerably. On March 17th, I traveled to Pier as, to attend our South Dakota Association of County Commissioners I just wanted to note that at one, one place in our packet, it said that the post-legislative luncheon was at Swiftel, and it is not at Swiftel.
It's at the Dyke House Center.
Yeah, it's at the Dyke House.
And the intergovernmental conference is also there.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. And then the last thing, this is something that I think we need to talk about a little bit today in our open session, is what we're going to talk about in the intergovernmental meeting as far as our future planning, because you're going to be the one on the hot seat there. So, you know, we, you must.
Nervous what I'm going to say?
No, no, not at all. Oh, there he is. So, you know, I, I think we might need to discuss that. And that's all I have. Oh, one other thing, you know, as far as surplus computers, I, I think we should check with Sean and see if we have any sitting in that room that we could let the 4H use. Now I'm done.
Yeah, well, I didn't know if we wanted to do that discussion now or later, but go ahead.
Which discussion?
Well, what we're going to talk about.
I'll have to do it later.
He'll do it in his report.
Okay, on the 12th, I went to the emergency management exercise, which again was great and was enlightening to see as many people, entities we had there. I mean, the railroad was important to have there. That was great to see them. And then, you know, obviously airport and everything that went involved that, you know, you can never be too prepared, but I would say I feel pretty good with the, the people and the planning that's gone on already, you know, in our county and that kind of stuff. So it's a very good exercise and I think we're in good hands. On the 16th, it was a busy day. Met with Scott with Banner, with Commissioner Wiseth on the 34th. Then we took off to the eight-county meeting in Bryant, which was good, with legislators there and good discussion, and then hustled back for the BEDC meeting and had a couple-hour discussion there. And, and their big thing they're working on is workforce. This, we, we sat, we were, this is a three to five o'clock meeting and we spent the whole time basically on workforce and discussion of how to get our hands around a shortage of, of our workforce and, and different things like that. So it, that works, I mean, so many different aspects have a, have a pull on workforce, housing, you know, the jobs, pay, you know, all that different stuff has a lot of thing there. So had a lot of good discussion. Not sure we came out with any things that we really found the golden straw there, sort of solution, but anytime you have good discussion, it certainly is going to spawn some good ideas. So then on the 18th, on the 19th, went to Pier for our spring workshop, which again was very good and up to date and very good update for what we're doing here and how we should be doing things. And it was a good refresher, so I think that's about it, so.
Okay. Well, I can't add a lot. I was at the tabletop, you heard that. Was at Banner with Ryan and went to Sioux Valley. The only thing is, I noticed on Stacy's deal, the guys have a problem with it being on a Wednesday instead of a Monday. You do.
I don't.
But, yeah.
I don't have a problem with it being on Wednesday. I think some auditors have an issue with it being on Mondays because they're preparing for county commission meetings the next day. There are, you know, several counties that meet weekly, so Mondays are their Friday.
It's not going, not going to change for the next meeting because immediately, I know this change isn't accepted readily by that group, but so I just, was, was Wednesday a problem? So next time we have a meeting, of course, Commissioner Miller has sent it to a great deal of leadership in that group, so she, but Wednesday's fine, right? Vicki with us? Okay, very good. And then I was in Pier with everybody else, which is great, and liquor meeting with Leann. And I have a picture on my phone that dirt is being moved, you got one, too, over by Aurora, so economic development. over by Aurora, so economic development has begun. Not on the road, on the, on the project. So that's all I have. And the next item is executive session, sticking with the Agenda J and work sessions right after that. So thanks for hanging around, because I assume you're hanging around for the drainage. So we'll go into executive, I think I'm, oh, oh, yes. And I was thinking that I would introduce the commissioners and each one of you could keep something under five minutes. I'd let you just talk about your favorite thing. No, no, I'll keep you fine. I think, you know, other than to talk about our road projects, which are a bit expenditure, and our comprehensive plan, which Leanne can address, too, and some of the other things, I think you all have a seat at the table and can speak to anything that's, when you're introduced or the time comes. You have just as much power as me. And you have your expertise. That's all right. Unless you want to write up a script for me, then I'll. Mr. Miller, is that okay? Okay. All right, how about motion for executive session four, South Dakota Fied Law 1-25-2, Item 1, Discussing Employee Performance. Moved by Krogwin. Second by Jensen. All the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.